All right, good evening. We're gonna start the public hearing. We're gonna have the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance, then we'll have the roll call. Please stand. Heavenly Father, we've asked you to watch over us tonight as we go through our budget for the year, as we work towards doing the things for, we need to do for the citizens and for the town to make this go the way it works for all of us in the city. We ask in your heavenly name, amen.
Amen.
In the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Brunson? Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Fersner?
Here.
Commissioner Oliver?
Here.
All right, this is the tentative budget public hearing. This is a public hearing on the tentative budget and proposed millage rate for the city of Akoi. None of this hearing was contained in the notice of proposed property taxes mailed by the property appraiser. The city commission has previously set a proposed millage rate of 5.05 mils, which represents an 8.9 increase in millage over the rollback rate of 4.6361 mils.
The preliminary millage rate set by the city commission and contained in the trim notice is 5.05 mils. The maximum millage rate, which may be levied by the city by regular majority vote for the 2022-2023 fiscal year, is 7.0701 mils. Such maximum millage rate, having been determined pursuant to Section 200.185, subsection 3A, Florida statutes. The establishment of a millage rate between 7.0702 mils and 7.7771 mils requires a two-thirds vote, a supermajority of the membership of the city commission, or four votes. The establishment of a millage rate between 7.772 mils and 10 mils requires a unanimous vote of the city commission. Additionally, any millage rate adopted above the preliminary millage rate of 5.05 mils would require notice by first-class mail to each taxpayer. The tentative millage rate adopted at this hearing will become the maximum millage rate which may be adopted by the city commission at the public hearing on the final millage rate. A unanimous vote, or two-thirds vote, may be required to adopt the tentative millage rate as the final millage rate. At the final public hearing, the city commission may adopt a millage rate which is less than the tentative millage rate.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners and residents of the city. We're doing something just slightly different this year in that we wanted to revisit some of the information we provided at our workshop that some of our residents were not able to attend. This will not be long. I'll try to make this as quick as possible. Economic highlights: We experienced a 13% growth in taxable value in the city of Akoi versus an 8% growth rate in the previous year. The assessed value reflects your 2021 assessments, not your 2022. The median price of homes in the city grew by about 27.3% as of September of 2021, year over year. The 2021 general fund balance as of September 30th, 2021, was 28.3 million, up 2.2 from 2020. The assigned fund balance was 5.5. That represents an amount that is not spendable because it has been committed to expenditures already, previously committed. Unassigned, the spendable amount is 15.7. That was down 3.8 from 2020. It's due to the commission's commitment to completing downtown projects. Thirty-six, we are at 36% of expenditures in our fund balance. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends 33%. The city of Akoi has consistently maintained an average of 38. That is extremely well. What this graph shows you is just what I told you. It just shows it graphically. The top line shows our total fund balance. The middle line, or the green line, shows our spendable. And the bottom line shows the unspendable amount. And you can see that our total fund balance has continued to increase year over year. The budget that we're presenting to you tonight, and I'm not gonna read this verbatim, but it reflects the commitments the commission and city leadership have made to the citizens of the city in lowering millage rate, increasing the spending on roads and drainage, increasing spending on sidewalk improvements, and its commitment to the employees to help absorb the ever-increasing inflation that we are experiencing. The proposed millage rate is 4.95. This budget is balanced at 4.95. That's down .1 mils from 2022. The ad valorem revenue was budgeted at $19,221. That's an increase of 1.9 mils, or 11% over last year. The increase will be used to fund and balance the budget. We are seeing a 5.11% increase in personnel costs, and we are seeing about 11.28% increase over 2022 in operating costs. Again, in keeping with our commitment to ever lower the millage rate, you can see that we have dropped the millage rate year over year since 2017, when the adopted millage rate was 5.9104. Tonight, we're bringing you 4.95. The commission's commitment to our staff and city employees is reflected in this graph, where you can see that since 2017, they have consistently awarded an average pay increase of 3%. This year, the average pay increase will be 5%. I say average because some members of bargaining units, that is bargained, and will be based upon their contract. As you can see here, our commitment to improving our sidewalks, we have significantly increased the budget for sidewalk repairs this year. Paving and drainage, the same thing, year over year with a slight downturn in 2021. We have continued to apply a larger portion of our budget to our paving and drainage improvements. What this graph, if you had more time to study this, would show you graphically is where we're getting our revenues from. The bottom, the purple, reflects our taxes. The next lineup is our cash balance, which means we are using some of our fund balance. It would be remiss of us to hold on to the money and not spend the money that citizens are giving us for the benefit of the citizens. If you could see, you could see that this portion of the taxes is not growing as quickly as it used to because we're lowering the millage rate. What we like, and what I think is significant about this graph, is it shows you on what functions we're spending, and 46.9% of our budget is being spent on public safety. Okay, now the important pieces. Subsequent to the publication of this book, there were two changes that are not yet reflected in the budget books that the commission and the mayor have. We have added $25,000 to the general government budget. Those are for hiring incentives. That was an inadvertent oversight on my part. I just failed to key it in, so that was keyed in later. The water and wastewater fund, we are adding a part-time utilities inspector at a salary of $46,000, and that is the general ledger line that you will see that reflected in in your next version of your budget book. During the workshop, several items came up for conversation among the commission and the mayor, and the, those, this is, this slide reflects our understanding of the actions that we were directed to take. We reduced by $60,000 the contract for Alcade and Fay. We reduced by $5,000 the youth council budget. We increased by $25,000 paving, striping, restriping citywide streets. We added $72,000 to add six speed tables. The location of those speed tables will be determined after our public works in streets do the necessary studies. The HRDB future events programs were increased by $20,000 for events that will be approved by the commission at a later time. Neighborhood matching grants were increased by $14,000. And, as I mentioned, hiring incentives, we are adding the $25,000 as discussed during the workshop. There were items that were discussed during the workshop that no action was taken, or action was taken that's not reflected in the budget. Youth council travel expenses, those expenses are funded in the youth initiatives line. Hackney Prairie Speed Calming, that is already funded in the budget. Resurfacing of Moore Road to Maguire, excuse me, Maguire to Seventh, that was added in the CIP plan for FY '24. And I can tell you which page, as a matter of fact, if you're looking for it. That's page 50, excuse me, 241. Commission spousal travel privileges, no budget adjustment was made. That will be amended by resolution. Coventry Park, exercise equipment, no action was taken. It was not recommended for neighborhood park. Small business grants, no action was taken. Reflective Park at African-American Cemetery, no action was taken. Sculpture of children at Unity Park, no action was taken. As I mentioned earlier, the budget is balanced at 4.95 mils. That represents a 7% increase over the rollback rate of 4.631. I have nothing further at this time.
Thank you. All right. I will now call upon the public for comments and questions regarding the tentative budget. I have two forms filled out for comments. Mr. Moyer, and then Dorsec. Mister, Mister. What do you do? Well, that's the two forms I've got in my hands. Who? Okay. Mister, I got Ms. Dragan now, too, so. I didn't hear you.
He wants a form.
Okay. Three minutes. Three minutes.
Hello, my name is Tanya Durisca, and I'm a member of the HRDB board here in Akoi. I am a member as of January this year, and...
Hello? That's better. My name is Tanya Durisca, and I'm a member of the HRDB board, the Human Relations Diversity Board. Joined the diversity board in January of this year, and was asked to come and present a request for funding. The Human Relations Diversity Board's objective is to promote understanding, respect, goodwill, and equality among citizens and businesses of Akoi. The board consists of seven to 13 voting members who serve on three-year terms. Only persons who reside in Akoi, own real property, or own businesses in Akoi are allowed to be members. The board also includes two non-voting members, who are typically elected or city staff. When a community promotes diversity and inclusion, it garners trust from its community members and ensures that the members feel valued. So what is, I know. I didn't realize I only had three minutes. So what is diversity? How do I go, I'm sorry, how do I go back? Anybody? The practice of including or involving people from different socio-ethnic backgrounds and genders and sexual orientation. The inclusion is the policy of providing equal access to opportunity and resources for people who might otherwise feel excluded or marginalized, such as people with mental disabilities or members of other minority groups. Right now, the population in Akoi is right under 50,000, with a two, almost two and a half percent increase annually. This is the breakdown, as I mentioned, I didn't realize I only had three minutes. This is the breakdown of, by race and the community. Last year, 2021 to 2022, the HRDB presided over two events, the MLK Parade and the Akoi Remembrance Event. We would like to increase the number of events, culturally diverse events that we manage over the 2022-2023 year. These are just a few of the events that we collectively spoke about and decided that these would be events that we would like to put our time and energy into managing over the next year. In addition to culturally diverse events, we also have business and community events, training programs, art activities, and other type of events, storytelling and healthcare events that we'd like to conduct. The HRDB is requesting a total of $100,000 to cover costs to hold these culturally diverse events for the 2022-2023 year.
Excuse me, three minutes.
I'm sorry.
Can you finish this part? Will that be it?
Okay. The application deadline is this, is this year, is today, I believe, and this is what we're requesting. I can't go over every, everything, because I didn't realize I only had three minutes. But we feel very passionate that, given the ability to utilize funding in advance, have an understanding of what our funding would be, will give us the ability to allocate those funds for these cultural events. We'll be able to plan ahead of time and, and make those events more diversely inclusive in the community.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much.
Jen Moyer.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Time's up on the TVs, as you can see it as we put it on, so.
Yes, sir. I have a PowerPoint, too. I don't know how to get to it. It's right under the, oops, sorry.
You're welcome.
My name's Jim Moyer. I live in Harden Park. I have a request for four different items that I'm asking the commission to consider including. The first one, and again, I'm fairly new to the city of Akoi, there has to be better local signage here. With us being a population of 50,000, and people, I'm sure, every winner especially, say, "Oh, let me come visit my relative in Akoi and go to Disney World." Well, the signage in the city of Akoi, if they want to go to West Oaks Mall or whatever, it's just too small. It needs, there needs to be more money and better signage within the city. And on the north side, where the major, where a lot of the population is, there's really no signage at all coming to the new downtown area. Second item, tomorrow is POW MIA Recognition Day, and I'd like to ask $500 be included in the budget and given to the local American Legion Post 109. It was voted on Tuesday by the membership and put in the minutes of, that I would ask this request today. The third thing is the motto here, the Center for Good Living. Excellent motto. But I had to do lots and lots of research, and I know it's on the patch of the police department, which I think is excellent, but I don't believe a lot of people coming new to the city of Akoi are aware this is the Center for, for Good Living. I just think it has to be better promoted. And I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's my thoughts.
That's your pleasure.
And I'm suggesting up to $25,000 for that. And how do I scroll this thing down? Okay. The fourth and last item I'm asking for, and this goes in line with, with Ms. Tanya says, I didn't know they put together a list. So I'm asking, what my thoughts are, there should be $120,000, one budget item, line item, that Akoi Remembers History Series. And this isn't all just for the HRDB. For example, when 2025 rolls around, if the police board wants to do an event for the 25th anniversary of 9/11, that would come out of this budgeted item as well. So I have a whole list. I handed it out for everyone. Thank you for your time, and God bless. Please consider.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Ms. Hart?
Good evening, everyone. I am Lori Hart. I am a member, I'm on the wrong. I'm a member of the HRDB board. I'm currently the chair, and I understand that we are in the process of finalizing our fiscal year for 2023. So therefore, I'm here tonight to request upon approval of any events that's scheduled that we implement or present to the council for approval. We're asking that the proposed Motherland King Day Parade celebration of $8,000 be approved, as well as the Black History Essay Contest for $2,100, $2,100, and the November Remembrance Event for $30,000, as well as the Hispanic Month Event for $9,000. These things were proposed to the council for 2023, and we ask that as you finalize your fiscal year, that you will take that in mind upon these events being approved by the council for 2023. And we once again want to say thank you so much for your support for this year, as we try to work hard and to bring our community together here in Akoi. Thank you.
Will you, will you say those prices again, those amounts?
For the Motherland King Parade Celebration, $8,000. The Black History Essay Contest, $2,100. November Remembrance Event, $30,000. And the Hispanic Month Event, that's the Fiesta de Clares, $9,000. So these are the events that we are working on and interested in implementing next year in 2023, and we ask that you consider this budget, this proposed budget, if these events are proposed by the city council for next year.
We've already put in 30,000, 32, 30 or 32,000 for that, the one on the November event. So that's already in what we discussed at the last, on our tentative budget. Okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you. Dorcas Dillard?
Hello, everybody. I came in just in time to see that the youth council budget was $5,000 shorter, and just wondering what that consisted of, and I sort of think that it's my consulting fee?
Did anybody send that, Melanie? Yeah, that's what it was. We did cut the budget out. We just cut that salary in half.
Okay, and is it?
That was done by all the commissioners, I think one, it was voted on at the, they had the budget process, we were doing it.
Okay, but, okay, but it was voted on and it's already set?
It's in the book for that, but we hadn't finished our budget till the night, in the next meeting.
Okay, and I'm, I'm just wondering why?
Well, just what we come up with, because we have no other volunteer that does, gets paid $10,000 a year.
Okay, but that was a negotiated contract?
Okay, you got, go ahead and finish your time. I'm not gonna get into a public discussion, but that's what.
Okay, well, if it's a public discussion, and it's money, and it's something that concerns me, and I'm running the youth council, I think it is important.
Like I said, I'm not wanting to do that. I'm not gonna get into that, but it is our city event. It is helped by, let me finish, by Melanie, we brought it back to her. She's also doing the work on it. So we have, like I said, it's, it's, I'm gonna stop.
That's, okay, so that's the, okay. So that's the way it was right from the very beginning. When I negotiated the contract, Melanie and Amber were part of the process. When we changed it over to a council, they still were involved. Now, I am planning, in fact, you, Mayor, I haven't heard from you about coming to the meeting. There's so many things that go on behind the scenes that not even Melanie and Amber know about, and that really deals with the kids themselves, because the kids themselves, whether, if anybody knows that has young people, it's a different kind of kid. It's a different kind of student. They have issues that they bring into the, into our group as a council that they don't share with other people, and those are things that I deal with. They call me at home, they come to my home, I pick up some, I take them home. Those are things that are not part of what you're gonna see in the day, day-to-day things. And just to give you some background, just so you understand that it's more than just the meetings that we have and setting up the agenda, it's also things like students calling me, saying that they had something serious happen at school. One student has gotten stabbed since we've been there. I haven't ever shared that with anybody. I have students calling me about things that happened in the city that they need help with. All of those are the kinds of things that you don't see every day. And we do have, I do have a contract that I put together, and I guess I'm, I'm just a little miffed at why no one has brought it to me, that I had to kind of hear it secondhand, and what the reason was for it, because I see a whole lot of increases in the budget, but why would you decrease something that's concerning the youth? And then your, and then another thing that I have to say, I'm just gonna add on here, I now know as of yesterday that your grandkids are part of the council, right?
It's a city function, that's right.
Right, okay.
They're now 17 years old, and I wanted to be involved in government. I've never been against this. Your time's up, so I'm gonna go ahead and talk now, okay?
Okay.
All right. So, yes, my two kids are on there, grandkids, because I asked them to join.
Okay.
Because I want it to be a diversity-type board also. So I asked my two granddaughters, they're both seniors in high school, they have to have community service through the thing.
Right.
But I will, once again, explain to you, there is no volunteer board that gets paid $10,000. I don't make $10,000.
But I think that's the issue, Rusty.
I let you talk.
I think that's the issue.
I let you, no, it's not.
Yeah, it has to be, because this is the second time you brought it up.
I'm gonna give you one minute, let me finish, and then your time's up. I'm not gonna argue with about it. My, my opinion is, I voted for the youth council, too. I like the youth council, but we, we got a personal staff that can do it, that does it.
Okay, so is the person on staff going to do it?
All right, I'm gonna cut, that's it.
Okay, but I'm, I'm just asking a question. Is the person on staff gonna do it and take care of it?
I tried to talk to you in a way, and you won't let me talk.
No, that's not true. You told, you gave me three minutes, but you were interrupting my, my three minutes.
No, I didn't. I gave you the extra time, Dorcas.
Rusty.
I gave you the extra time. Why don't you throw my grandkids? Yeah. Anybody out here that has grandkids, Miss, there's another lady called about it, and I told her to get it, she got her kids in there.
Okay.
All right, that's it. Next person is Chris Atkins.
Rusty, you continue to be rude. You continue to be rude, and I don't understand. I didn't do anything to you personally, but it always seems to be personal.
I didn't say you did.
It always seems to be personal.
Everybody pay attention to what's going on here, they're gonna try to make this argument tonight, so it's not gonna be an argument. I'm ruling the meeting. The next person up is Chris Atkins. If you want to talk, come on up.
Well, I actually, while Mr. Atkins is coming up, I would like to make a statement, Mayor.
You coming up? Are you coming up? I'm not hollering, I'm asking you to come up.
Ms. Dillard, I just want to say this, that the statement was made that we voted unanimously, and that was not the case.
All right.
I was the one that actually voted against it.
Well, you did, I said it was 4 to 1.
No, you said it was unanimous. I just wanted to make sure.
No, I didn't say that.
Everybody on this council. Everybody on this council.
I did not say that.
Everybody said reduce my.
Here's what I'm telling you. Listen up tonight, folks, because it's an argument time. It wants to be an argument between one person and another person. And it's not going to be that way. We're going to do the budget. Like I said, if anybody in the citizens in this town want to pay volunteers $10,000, we'll get a bunch of them to join. All right, Mr. Atkins. Mr. Atkins, if you keep talking, you're gonna have to go.
What, are you gonna come down here?
No, I'm not coming down there, we got somebody.
You're rude.
I'm not, just.
You're rude.
How am I rude when you're not rude?
Everybody is rude.
Yeah, right. Yeah, the only certain people I know. All right, Mr. Atkins.
This is exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Because I'm giving more than you.
See?
You didn't negotiate your contract properly?
We don't, the citizens negotiate our contract. The citizens do it. Mr. Atkins, if you're gonna start, start.
Okay. Uh, I'm sorry, ma'am, that this had to interrupt, um, what was ever going on there. Uh, it's obviously very difficult to follow that, and I think it's one of the problems we've had as, um, as a commission for some time. I myself have been, um, talked to the same way, and I think decorum is, is important. But, um, in all due respect, uh, I'd like to go ahead and just comment about some things that concern me. Uh, one, uh, when this, when the city holds these commission meetings for budgets and they have the, um, uh, citizens come in after the public comments from the commissioners, it really feels like really what we say doesn't have any meaning. Um, I would like to see you guys take up maybe consideration of allowing public citizen comments prior to you guys actually finalizing what you feel should be done. I think maybe then we might feel a little bit more like what we say has some meaning to it. I don't think it's on purpose, I just think the way that it's specifically set up right now, that it feels, feels like that, you're gonna have these two meetings and then you're gonna vote. It's gonna, I don't know how that works. Um, I want to talk a little bit just in general about, uh, the way that our funds in our city are supposed to be utilized from, um, you know, our, our leaders. I think we have to be as efficient as we possibly can. I think we have to be smart about it. I think when we run our own budgets at home, it's very important, uh, that we pay attention, okay? Uh, I take notes at every single meeting, and with three minutes, it feels very pressured, and I'm actually a decent, um, public speaker. Uh, but I can say that we have to become a little bit more effective in the things that we do, maybe a little bit more proactive, and we definitely need to execute better. I'm not going to go back and forth in regards to the city hall in general, it's a beautiful building. My, my opinion on whether we should have it or not is irrelevant at this point in time. I would like to make, make a point, though, that when we do talk about taxes or mileage rates that everybody said they wanted to reduce, overall, non-adverum fees or fees that are amended to your tax bill are actually what encompasses the most that they get. So by lowering the mileage rate by a minimal amount and then raising your fees, it's kind of the same principle, it's just being a little bit dishonest about it. Uh, so in your, in your, in your, um, presentation earlier, you had a breakdown of the expenses or the incomes, and it showed taxes, but it didn't show the non-adverum fees, so I'm assuming that the non-adverum fees are mixed with the taxes?
I didn't recall.
Uh, I just didn't see it on that picture thing, so I think in that instance, they, they called them what they were, their ta, their taxes. Um, I think as we sit back and we continue to grow as a city, like I said, we have to become more effective in what we do. We funded this building in 2017 and we didn't break down, break ground until 2021. Everybody knows that the cost of living, the cost of durable goods and building goods increases dramatically. Anything we have on the books to be built, especially when it comes to paving, sir, or concrete, I would increase the budget and do it immediately. Even your word said it's going to increase between 30 and 40% over the next year or so. So the faster we get those in the ground and get working, the more we're gonna get for our money. If we wait years and years and years to start projects, they cost us more, they have a lot of changes that are involved, and that's not the best way that we need to spend our money. We need to be efficient, we need to be proactive, and we need to execute. It takes forever to get anything accomplished in Ocoee. That, I mean, I'm not, that's not, that's not new. I mean, that's, that's for real, I've lived here 23 years. My time's up, I do, I do value and appreciate it. I did put something on the record, because I knew I didn't have time, and I brought some copies if anyone wants it. Just has to do with some things that I thought would help us, uh, from maybe lighting our sidewalks in the street out here at night, it seems a little bit dark at night for walking. I think from a safety standpoint, that would be beneficial. I'd also like to make one comment, Mayor, if you just give me 30 more seconds, in regards to the Human Diversity Board and, and the way that that's going. Diversity is something that's imperative for our society, but diversity also comes with thought and ideas, right? I, I see, I, I see a lust for our city to want to grow and become known for something. A lot of times, that may be events. In the past, I've been made, I've, I've been persecuted for talking about Founder's Day, that's now the Ocoee Music Festival. I always wanted to understand that it be separate from Parks and Recs, but let them do that, because they do a great job, but have its own standalone budget. That way, we could actually increase events. Maybe if we knew we broke even in what we made and what we spent, then we could have lots of events, all kinds of events, but we gotta know, we can't just kind of mix it in. It should be its own individual thing, and I would love to see the city have more events and fund it. I put, I put 500,000 in there.
Time's up.
That's what Founder's Day used to cost us, so I can use that on anything.
Give it to the city clerk, she'll keep it on.
Yeah, I emailed it to her.
Oh, okay, all right, so it'll be on record.
I do have one for each one of you guys, you'd like one?
Give it to the city clerk, she'll give it to us.
Okay, perfect, so you need, uh, George, you got one, right?
Marcy Jernigan.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm not a public speaker and I don't have anything prepared. I'm just speaking as a resident of Ocoee, as I'm hoping everybody else here, here is. I understand about diversity and everything else. I mean, I come from many different, I'm a Heinz 57, I've got every kind of blood there is in me. I feel what we need to focus on as a resident is the residents in general. We're all different everythings. I think we should focus on paving of the roads, fixing the sidewalks, fixing the lights, putting the speed humps in, making things safer, slowing people's butts down going down Clark Road. You go down Winter Garden, I got a ticket not long ago, because I wasn't paying attention, listening to my music, duh, and I get a $200 speeding ticket. I now hit my speed control or cruise control when I go down the street, because I know I don't want a ticket. I have almost gotten hit so many times just from driving the speed limit, because people are going around me. As residents, we are, should come together as a union, as people, and stop separating everybody all the time with everything. Love everybody for who we are as residents and not pull people apart because they're not this or they're not that, or they're not German, they're not Italian, they're, let's put everybody together and let's have celebrations together and enjoy each other. What's happened to our world? What's happened to our people? Love your neighbors. My neighbors are so diverse and I love all of them. I walk, I wave to everybody, I talk to everybody, they need me to get their mail, I get their mail. They need me to feed their animals, I feed their animals. Let's work about safety, maybe getting a traffic division if we don't have one. Let's, let's make our, our, our city like Winter Garden, I hate to compare ourselves to them, but let's make it that way. What's happened to the joy of just living together as a community and loving each other for that? I don't understand, and I'm just speaking from my heart, so I hope it means something.
Thank you. Vivian Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Vivian Light Johnson, and I am a resident of Ocoee. I live in Ocoee Landings. Um, I wasn't going to speak, except I was sitting here, but I do have a question, if it's okay for me to ask it before I start. Mr. Mayor?
You got, you got three minutes, you say what's your?
My question is, I just heard the gentleman talk about Founder's Day and the music festival. When I looked at the budget, I could not see it in the budget. Is it in the budget or is it a separate?
No, it's in the budget.
Okay. Can someone tell me where it's in budget and how much?
There, the budget goes anywhere from, we spend probably a lot of money on the thing, but we raised the money back in sponsorships that pays it back. I think there's $100,000 that, we've been doing it for 27, 28 years, so whatever we have left every year goes back towards it, but it, it goes, the mu, it's not Founder's Day, because we had to change it, there was discussion about that, so it's called Ocoee Music Fest. But it's, um, it raises, usually costs $300,000 to $400,000, and the city puts in the startup money and then it goes, as we do the bills, we pay it back through the sponsorships.
Well, that's one of the reasons I stood, Mr. Mayor.
You go back and check, you'll find out the sponsorships are somewhere, somewhere $200,000, $300,000.
That, that's part of the reason I stood, because I heard this gentleman say standalone budget, and I think that's the, the concern I had, even, I've been attending different board meetings and things, that it's, it's a challenge, I think, for some of the boards to operate, because you, they don't know what they're operating on, and they, it seems as though, every time, I've been a resident, I come to the meeting, and it seems like the Human Diversity Board is always here begging other people, the money is there or something, I don't know. Uh, it seems that way. And I would like to see that, that these things are, have a separate reporting system or something, so that we as residents can really see what's going on, because I couldn't, and I'm not really a big budgeter person, but as I looked at it, I couldn't tell those things that you're saying. I couldn't tell where the revenue came in and where that went out, I couldn't see all that. And, you know, that's what I'm used to, is doing my budget. And I would like to support, um, the young lady who spoke for the Human Diversity Board about getting a budget for other, those other items. I'm not sure, and I hate the chair left, because I was at the meeting, so I'm not sure why she had a speaking different for it than what I saw at the meeting, because the board itself asked that young lady to speak. So, just saying. So thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. I don't, I don't know why this already had to go, she may have something to do. She is the chairman, and she suggested what we need to do. Uh, all right. We're gonna go to the comments from the commissioners. Commissioner Branson.
Or, or we can go to discussing the budget items and then we can do discussion during those things, whatever you want to do. They've got it down as comments, so we can start discussion, comments of what money are going to, helps we're gonna have.
Turn my microphone, hopefully everyone can hear me. All righty then, okay, that's better. I can hear myself. Okay, uh, first I want to circle back to, uh, the HRDB. We, we had a couple of people come before us, uh, we asking about funding for the HRDB, $100,000, $125,000, uh, I think we, we set aside $30,000. And I agree, and, and I've heard this argument before, I'm not sure why the chairman of the HRDB had to leave, but I think this is important enough for her to be here, uh, until we finalize what it is we're gonna be looking at for that advisory board. But I think it's, it's valuable in saying that, uh, the HRDB is, is moving along quite well. But it's, it's important to understand, just like Ms. Light just mentioned, that it seems like the HRDB is always here asking for money, when if they had a budget, they can actually manage that budget, uh, before them. So I think it's important if, if we as a commission will give them ample amount of money, not just $30,000, because that's the, the cost of what their last Ocoee Remembers Event cost, um, give them a, a budget so they can put on other events. And at the end of the year, they didn't use all that money, then they lose that money. But, but having them come before us and then have to literally keep asking for, for money every other month or so, uh, doesn't seem fair to that, to that, uh, group of volunteers that sit on that board. So I would recommend that we revisit that, the amount of money that we're, uh, have, uh, agreed to, to a budget, the HR, to the HRDB, uh, for their budget, for their yearly budget, and possibly increase that to $100,000. And if not $100,000, something, uh, close to it. That way, the events that which they're gonna be able to put on, they can put on knowing that they have a certain amount of money to use for those events throughout the year. And it's their responsibility to manage that money accordingly. And that's gonna be the first one, I think we probably, that should, uh, probably open that up for discussion before we move any further off to another item. Okay, I would like to make a motion that we, we, we set aside $100,000 in this next fiscal year's budget for the Human Relations and Diversity Board's budget.
So this is to amend the budget, to increase the, increase the amount to 100,000 or add 100,000?
To increase it to 100,000, from 30,000 or whatever it is now to 100,000.
So what does that change the mileage rate on that strike?
Before we go on, I'll second that motion.
Turn your, turn your mic on.
Changes the mileage rate by 0.0171, or it would raise it to 4.9671.
Okay, all right. Motion's been made, Commissioner Branson, you'll hear it second.
Commissioner Oliver.
Oliver.
I second it.
Second it by Commissioner Oliver. All right, now discussion by the commissioner.
Say something? Um, I disagree with that motion. Um, I will, I will be voting no. I don't believe that, um, I don't see it, I guess what I want to see is for $100,000 and using our residents' money, I want to see more of a business plan. I don't see anything there. They've come to us numerous times asking for 100,000, 125,000, it's been all over the board. I think that if we give a, the amount of $30,000, and, um, we all have to work within a budget, and I have a real problem with spending $100,000, my residents' money, when I have residents calling me, asking me for sidewalks. I think that's where our money needs to go. Um, I understand we, we should, these functions are excellent, but I think they need to be basically pared down to $30,000. So I, I will be voting no to the $100,000.
Yeah, if, if I may respond to that, I understand where you're coming from, Commissioner Wilson. However, this is not one event that the HRDB is talking about. This event is, is not, uh, just one month or one time of the year. I think that what they're talking about, unless I'm misunderstanding, we're talking about 12 months out of the, that fiscal year. So from one October until 30 September, they're talking about events that they can put on during that time. But right now, if they want to put on another event, they have to come back before us to ask for more money.
No, I think 30,000 is, it's, it's, it's like a budget we work within our home. You only have a certain amount, so you have to work within that budget. I think $30,000 is adequate for, without a business plan, without showing me, saying what you want to do, I know that what you, the functions that you, they currently have on their agenda, I think that $30,000 is the most I would vote for.
Without a business plan, or if you, if you, are you saying that if they had a business plan, you would be more open to a $100,000 budget?
Um, I won't be open to 100,000. I will not be open to 100,000, but I believe that, um, there is no business plan, we do not, what we want to do and what we do, and right now, what we're doing is we're funding the items that we actually see, not what we are projecting without a business plan. So right now, I wasn't going to vote for $100,000 anyways before, and there really is no coming back. The money is, we have only a certain amount of money to work with, as anyone does in their household budget, and we have to stick to that and do the best we can under 30,000. I also believe that, um, Support Services has some of that money put into their budget already, if I'm correct. I hear Al over there, but.
Yes.
Is some, is, what do you already have budgeted, without me going into the book? What do you, what does your department already have budgeted for these events?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that we had the facts on here. Uh, we have for the MLK Day Parade and Celebration at $8,000.
You already have that in your budget?
That's in the budget now. Uh, we have Black History Month Essay Contest as $2,000. Those are prizes for the people who participate. And then we have the November Remembrance Event at $30,000. That's actually split into two parts, because we have to pay some in one fiscal year and the event occurs in the second fiscal year. You remember this year, we had to go, had to pay the deposit of seventeen thousand dollars. And then we had to pay the balance due of thirteen thousand. Well, that's next fiscal year. So the next year's budget has got thirteen thousand dollars in it. And it also has twenty thousand dollars in it for the deposit for the FY, for the FY twenty-four event.
So that's thirty-three thousand.
So that's, so altogether, yes.
Thirty-three plus eight plus two.
Plus eight plus twenty-one hundred, right. So that, that's where there is now.
Okay.
The, the issue we run into is productive capacity. In that, all these events are really city events. And HRDB is a volunteer organization. So that when we're spending the money, it's city staff that's spending the money. City staff that's responsible for making sure that everything's done according to the purchasing rules and, and those types of things. It's, it's the city making those commitments. And we have to do that often in advance of the event. So then the issue becomes for how are you going to staff that? So if we were to have more events, we would probably need an additional staff person to physically go through the process of supporting that and being able to conduct that event regardless of how many volunteers may participate. Because once we've advertised it and we're putting it on, it's a city event. And HRDB guides how that is done and, and provides information and support. But ultimately, it's a city event that has to be conducted by city forces supplemented by volunteers. So any, any, if you're going to go through a larger program, and I'm not commenting on whether that, whatever, just saying, you need to look at it from the standpoint of having the staff support necessary. Not just, here's a bunch of money, figure out what to do with it. We need to have, as you were saying, staff to go with the money so that we have a complete program.
You'd almost have to hire an additional person to put on all these functions each month. Am I correct?
There's, there's a lot of things to do, yes.
Yeah, I push back on that. That doesn't, you do not have to have an entire body to help coordinate these events. Because you can spread load the efforts of putting on these events over your staff. And so saying, and it's disingenuous to say that, that you need an entire body when you have a, a, we have a department here in the city that does community relations. That's their function. That's, community outreach is what they do. Then we have a Human Relations and Diversity Board, along with every other board, advisory board we may have. So that's disingenuous to say that.
I disagree with that. I disagree with that.
Hang on, hang on. And then, in, in the same token, the HRDB, the board itself, has got to get their volunteer, or any board, it's not just HRDB. Any board has got to make sure that their volunteers are participating in their events. And then you put some of those people to work on some of the staff, some of the responsibility that the staff may have. Now, of course, they can't do all the things the staff do because, well, they're not seeing employees. But you can make that a requirement of the HRDB or any other advisory board to do that. And I've done this before. This is not something new. And I, I understand that we all work with a certain number of man-hours a week. And we try not to bust, bust that, that, that man-hour budget and go into overtime and all these other things. I'm not saying that the HRDB is looking to have an event every month. So, you know, you say you need a whole body for an event that they may have six to seven events a year. I, I just don't see where that's, because most of it is, is, it's, you're taking it off the shelf and just change, it's a, it's a, it's a boilerplate. You're just changing the name. You're not starting from the beginning every time you do something. So I'm not sure what, why, where that came from.
I'm, I'm gonna disagree, but I, because, yes, I work every year on this, well, I haven't worked in a couple of years on it because we haven't had it, but the Spring Fling. I, as a volunteer, does not, when you have volunteers, volunteers, if they can't make it, they're not there. You have to have the staff. I know with Spring Fling, without the police department and without utilities and without the staff of community relations, that would not be possible. Because those are the people you depend on to be there. So yes, it does require staff. It requires staff probably much greater than you think it does.
No, not at all.
But I will tell you that I'm just.
What you're talking about, an entirely, an entirely different, or one more body dedicated for this. And that's not, I don't.
I agree.
That's not what we're looking for. That's what, what we, 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 we do not need a, a body that's gonna be dedicated to HRDB events. That just doesn't make any sense. That doesn't make any manpower sense. It doesn't make any employee sense. It just, it doesn't make any planning sense. Because planning events is, that doesn't make, it doesn't make any sense.
Commissioner Branson.
I don't have a prob, I don't have a problem with the money per se. What I do have a problem with is the scattered approach that the HRDB is taking. I haven't heard anyone get up saying, I am the chairman of the HRDB and this is what we decided we are gonna ask for. We heard two, three, four people get up saying, I'm a member of the board and everything, and this is what I think should be done. Now, I'm all for it. And if it takes twelve months, an event each month, so be it. It's for the people of this city. That's why I don't have a problem with the, the money. It's going back to the community. The HRDB has got to get a little more unified and come up with a plan saying, this is what we talked about, this is what we decided on, and this is exactly what it's going to cost. We're receiving sheets of paper during the tentative budget hearing saying, you know, we want these events and that events, and it's gonna cost somewhere in the neighborhood of this, that, and the other. Took an a hundred thousand dollars plus here. I don't mind it, but I'd like to see a little more justification, a little more pre-planning involved saying, this is exactly what we want and this is exactly how much it's gonna cost. And I'd like to see it before the tentative budget hearing approval.
So you, you okay with a hundred something thousand?
A hundred thousand dollars total, which would be an additional. I know it's gonna raise the millage. I'm not very happy about that. Because we worked very hard to keep that millage down and to lower the millage.
Alright.
Yeah.
You through?
Yeah, I'm through.
Commissioner Oliver.
I agree with Commissioner Branson, but I only agree in part. There's been a lot of things said. Let me, let me start with what I, what I agree with. I agree with the fact that he said that he's heard multiple people come here and speak about the HRDB. And he's looking for, for them to be more unified and more uniform about their message and the narrative that they're trying to create for this commission to receive a hundred thousand dollars to do events in the city. I, I, I agree with, with that part. But as, as a member of the HRDB and sitting in those meetings, which I did sit at the last meeting and the, the board did approve unanimously that Mr. Risco would come to this, this meeting, to this meeting and do a presentation before the commission to request that hundred thousand dollars. I asked the chairperson as to why couldn't she come? And there was a reason. She gave a reason, which was a very good reason she couldn't come. And I said, okay, that's fine. Because protocol would, would, would indicate, yeah, yeah, she's, I see her. She came, she spoke. I thank you, Doug. I appreciate that. But yeah, she came and spoke, but I was sitting at the meeting, the same meeting that you were sitting at as well, Doug. And she, as well as the rest of the board, nominated Mr. Risco to come and speak. So again, if she was gonna come and speak, I thought that would have been great had she communicated that with her form, her, her, um, her board member. And she could have communicated that with her fellow board member to say, well, I'm gonna go speak. But it seems to me that the, the HRDB came up with one message, but then when we get here, it was two different messages that came out. And, and the chairperson had a totally different message from what the, it's. I'm sorry. It, it seems to me that there were, there were two different messages when we got here. So I don't know what happened in translation between that meeting and when we got here today. But obviously, something did happen, or there was some conversation had somewhere. And, and that message got translated or diluted or separated or split. But again, I agree with that part. They should have actually come together and had the, the one message. The other thing I'm hearing is, we're talking about the, the millage rate. There is a way, you know, before I get into the millage rate, I also want to, I want to comment on, on your, your comments about coming together as people. And when you were, when you were speaking, I, I, I understand exactly where you're coming from because we, we've spoken before.
You actually be first before everything else.
Absolutely. I've been, I've been in your house. We've, we've toured the neighborhood together. We've had great times and great conversations. And I think we're on the same page. And I, I agree with what she's saying. She's absolutely right. We have to come together. We have to be, become citizens of Akoi. Not just African-American citizens or Caucasian citizens or Muslim citizens. We gotta become citizens of Akoi. And I agree with that wholeheartedly. The only thing I, 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 that gives me a little pause is the fact when I, when I run into other citizens and they feel they're not included. I've had citizens literally talk to me and come to tears because they felt that they just don't feel that they're a part of this, this city. Because they have cultural events and they have to take them elsewhere because they just can't do it here. They don't get the support. So again, we have to be able to embrace those things. We gotta be, embrace other folks, other cultures, and allow those people to, 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 to celebrate their cultures, to celebrate their ancestors. Because when you look at it in its totality, if we, if we stop doing those kind of things, then we need to stop talking about nine eleven. Let's just not have that conversation anymore. Let's not memorialize those people that died, those Americans that died in nine eleven. Let's, let's stop talking to the Jewish Federation and let's stop talking about those, the, those people that died in Auschwitz. The, 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 uh, uh, German concentration camps. Let's stop celebrating those, those kind of things. So when you look at it in its totality, it culture, this is what makes this country so great. Because we are melting pot of cultures and we accept one another. And we celebrate one another. This is, this is what it's about. And this is what our HRDB is designed to do. And what I'm hearing is, I'm hearing that they have come together to put together, they want, they want to raise money to look ahead as opposed to keep reinventing the wheel year in and year out. They want to look ahead in the future to say, let's, let's contact these different diverse groups out here in Akoi and let's partner with them. Let's show them that we want to include them. Let's show them that we have a venue for them and maybe give them a few dollars because we support them. That's what I'm hearing. And then I hear that we talk about the millage rate, and that's going to lower the millage rate. Well, I know it, and I think that, that most of us up here know it, that it doesn't have to do that. We don't, we have enough money. We have ten million dollars sitting in a, a fire department fund that is not gonna cost ten million dollars. A five million there. We have five million in a gun range that ain't gonna cost them no more than a hundred thousand dollars. So yes, we have the money to put to this without affecting our millage rate. If we really wanted to, we could actually add money to that to even lower our millage rate by almost a, a quarter to a half point, if we wanted to do that. So when I hear that, that's just, as Commissioner Branson said, that's disingenuous. So let's not bring the millage rate into this. Let's, let's, let's look at coming together as citizens and allow this board to make a proposal to us. Set aside the hundred thousand dollars and just allow them to come back with a, with a business plan or whatever plan that they need. And say, well, we have contacted these different groups in the, in the community and we want to support them. That's all I got.
Well, as, as we move through the process of the city, and listen, I talk to people every day. I probably see more people every day around here than anybody does. We don't have a disillusioned group of people. The citizens are not upset with what we do. You know, you, you try to get into stuff and say stuff. And one of the things, everybody needs to pay attention with what goes on here. If you're trying to cause problems because somebody else differs from what you are or what you say, that's, something's wrong. I was elected up here to do what's right for citizens and all citizens. And I have citizens talk to me every day about what to do and what not to do with money. Yeah, I, I make, I make eighty-five hundred dollars, I think. Yeah, that's right. I'd give it up. I sold it to a bunch of things. I'll give up the insurance. Let's all give up our salaries and give it to the city. I don't have a problem. If we're gonna, but if, back to the thing about the items a while ago, if we want to give up that stuff to people, that's fine with me. But every board we got, pay the volunteers. I don't have a problem with that. Contract, I don't have a contract. My contract is the election thing. We get elected, that's what salary is when you get elected. So you know what it is. And that's what it should be, is what the citizens say it is. But it's just like people say, you, you want to get into arguments about this stuff and it's always aimed at me because I say something back. Because I am responsible for citizens. You can grapple and complain about, we complained about the music festival. It was Founder's Day. No, no person that was ever called a Founder's Day name was ever mentioned. But it had to be changed. That group of volunteers raised right up to four hundred thousand dollars to put on things. They don't go ask the commission for it. They go raise it. So if you citizens want to give it away, that's fine with me. But I'm telling you, and you can complain all you want to. The citizens, if you take a poll, there's average of ten, ten to fifteen thousand people come that weekend. Not in any of the other groups of things we do. But it's been going on for twenty-seven, twenty-eight years. It takes time to get to it. But you can make it an argument up here, one, one or two people, it's gonna be an argument. But no, I didn't talk like, if you say anything different than what they say, then I'm wrong. But I'm the mayor. I run the meetings. I can move my head whichever way I want, Mr. Moore. I think there's certain things we can do, not do. And I'm telling you, I don't want to get into arguments with you, but if you want to sit there and tell me that I can't talk when you're telling me what I'm doing, then you're wrong. And not a hundred thousand dollars, here's what you do. You put that there and when we get to that project, if you put that project on, which they've never done all those projects, you do the, you do the, the black essay, we do, we did, didn't do the Martin Luther King last year. If you do the Martin, then we pay for it. But go out and help. That's what volunteers are for. Go out and help raise some of that money back. I've already went out and raised the money, got a, got a donate, the, told us for the function in November. Who else has raised money? I guarantee you, not one of them up here has. So you, you, that's what you gotta do. And the, talk to the citizens of this town. You want to make it a separation, but you talk about up here, when we get up here, we're talking about unity. But when you get away from here, it ain't unity. The whole world's doing that crap now, and I don't care. This is what our city has got to be responsible. And Ms. Hart is the chairman. She got up and told us what they were asking for, and that's exactly what we did. That then you got a faction of other people getting up and all of a sudden, one commissioner's changed his mind now. That's fine. But listen, folks, you gotta take that money and count what it is when you give it away as taxpayers' money. And I ever, I'm for the last four years. It's about the music fest. Put a thing out on, on, on Facebook to all the citizens of this city and see what they say about the music fest. See if they want it or not. It seems to me like they must, because ten to fifteen thousand people. But we raised the money to pay for it. But then, that's a problem. So I'm not for giving a hundred thousand dollars on that. I'm for doing what she asked for. The eight thousand to twenty-one hundred and the thirty-something we're doing for next, in November. Because it doesn't cost a hundred thousand dollars to do that. We did it for twenty-something thousand in two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty. I'm not against it. I'm just against for doing things and somebody trying to force us into doing it. The, the, I, I think everybody needs to take, they say about talking to citizens, I don't see anybody riding around this town where I go. Mr. Moore, I see you a lot. You know where I go, and I see everybody in these places. Not a one of them has told me, they said, give them that hundred thousand dollars. Not one. They said, go through the process like you're supposed to do. And that's what, I appreciate Ms. Hart being the chairman. I know she came here tonight and said what she said as far as, she's the chairman. If she's the chairman, then she should be in charge of that. So she put down the money they wanted, and that's what I'd vote for. We have already voted for the thirty-two thousand. So we got a motion on the floor. Alright, all in, all in favor of giving a hundred thousand dollars? Vote. Where's my, oh, yeah. Alright, so that voted. So a hundred thousand dollar goes in that, so you gotta figure that onto the, on the money.
Can we figure that expense out of something else like Commissioner Oliver mentioned to leave the millage rate alone?
How do you leave the millage rate alone?
You can't do that yet.
Well, how, how do you leave the millage rate alone when you just added a hundred thousand dollars to it? Where are you gonna take it from? I don't understand where you'll take it from.
Well, there are, there are other projects out there that can be cut back, so. Well, you gonna cut back the concrete? You gonna cut back the street paving?
No, you're gonna, what you're gonna do is you're gonna, you can actually look at the, the five million we put into the fire station with the five million we put into the gun range. You can look at that. And, and, and I would hope that the city manager would chime in on this, please.
Yeah, I think what Commissioner Oliver is referring to is, we had five million dollars of ARPA funds for a fire station. We had five million for the police gun range. We know we're not gonna spend five million dollars on each one this year. Could be some architectural and design type costs, but we won't be spending five million dollars this year. So if you did keep those both at five million dollars, typically that, whatever we didn't spend would roll over into next year. So if you wanted to take that out of those two projects. So, if you wanted to take that out of those two projects, um, we'd have to pay it eventually, but we don't have to pay it in next year's budget, I think is the point that he's bringing across.
Excuse me, Mr. Frank.
Steal money from one budget. Every time you steal money from one budget, and I'm calling it stealing, you have to pay it back. And then next year, the milage rate goes up again because our will go up because you took money from one fund. Don't we see that in legislature? Don't we see that in legislature, they take money? Well, it's gotta come from somewhere. So, I'm, when I hear taking money from something that's already been budgeted, is a, is the wrong thing to do.
As the city manager stated that, that there's not, you're not, you're not taking, uh, from a budget, that money had to be parking lot, we had to put, we had to create a parking lot for that money somewhere. Because we know that a gun range is not gonna cost five million dollars. But we need to put that money somewhere so we can determine what we're gonna do with it and how we're gonna spend some of that money. That, that gun range ain't gonna cost no more than a hundred thousand dollars. That's, you're talking about fo- four point nine million dollars and we're asking for a hundred thousand dollars. So, there's, there's no, there's no theft in here at all. So, the, the, to use the word, uh, theft is, is a very strong word and I, I think that that is, is, is just the wrong word to use.
Just, just to clarify, um...
You can't build a house for a hundred thousand dollars, how you gonna build a, a gun range?
Well, I, 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 I'll tell you what I have. I have information concerning the city of Edgewater who just built one this year for seventy-six thousand dollars, indoor and outdoor gun range for seventy-six thousand dollars. They have, uh, thirty-five sworn officers, uh, in the city and they just built it. As a matter of fact, it's being built this year.
Commissioner, we couldn't put a slab in for that much money. I don't, I don't know, they must have hacked the building.
I, I have all the information right here.
We, we've got preliminary estimates of six to seven million dollars for the gun range and our last...
I reached out to the city, I have this information. If you want it, I can give it to you, you can contact the city of Edgewater, they would more than happy to share how they built the indoor and outdoor range.
I would love to see the plans for seventy-six, seriously, um, please send them.
I, I will get that information to you.
Okay, typically, a, um, a facility...
That was like the fire department was brought up, city manager for...
Yes.
Million and a half and I called Mr., uh, Nelson in Apopka, it was, it's three and a half to four million. In here, it was, said it was a million and a half. I called Brian Nelson and he said four and a half million. So, there's a little bit of discrepancy when we're talking about.
Yeah, man, the last time, um, we looked at the fire station up on West Road, um, we were talking about a public-private partnership and that seemed to have gotten out of hand. We were looking at a three to three and a half million dollar price tag. One of the last, uh, costs we got from the developer that was building up there, it went up to five point six million dollars. So, we just, you know, we just said, we have to look at this over again.
Okay.
We think ten million dollars for the two projects is a little low, actually, but, um, we, we won't know until we get some designs and we get some estimates from engineers.
All right, what's this, what's the square footage of that?
I'll make sure I get, I get that information to you because I have it right here. I spoke to them, I also spoke to the, to the actual builder of the fire station in Apopka as well. And it didn't come nowhere near me, near three million dollars. So, I can get that information for you as well as, as exactly what it cost to the penny.
Well, I would talk to the city, not the builder, because the city had to pay it, not the builder. So, like I said, I talked to Brian Nelson about it. He's the mayor over there and he told me what it cost. Plus, they got a million dollars from, uh, Camelia Brown. So, all right.
Okay.
Let's see, the, um...
Still over here.
All right, any other amendments to the proposed tentative budget?
Well, hang, hang, Mr. Mayor, we're, we're not... We're, am I still on? Is this still my time?
If you wanna talk, go ahead.
Okay. All right, now, let's, another, uh, item I wanna bring back up is the, uh, uh, salary for Ms. Dillard. I know we, we, we voted on this, this, uh, commission to reduce it by fifty percent. Uh, me not knowing all the things that Ms. Dillard talked about that she was involved with, with these students, uh, changes my mind on that. Uh, and I think everyone here, most people know that youth are a big part of, of whom I love the most in this city. Because I think education is, is so vastly important, that I use the bulk of my discretionary monies that, uh, we allot to ourselves as a commission, uh, for youth scholarships. Because I believe education is so very, very, very important. But also, I believe that we need champions of our youth. We need those folks who out there who are nurturing and helping our youth grow into good citizens. And it's, it's kinda, it's kinda tough for me before to make that decision to say, to say, let's go ahead and reduce it. But now that I have more information, I think we should revisit it. I think we should take a look at it. I understand that, that, uh, she's a volunteer or that it's a council now, but as she mentioned, she was there by way of contract. And so, she negotiated that. So, I think, you know...
Contract runs year to year, sir.
Right. No, and I understand that.
Yeah.
But I think what we did was, we, uh, we voted to end that contract, terminate that contract, uh, without notification to her. And I don't know if that's fair, I don't know if that's legal, I don't know if that's morally ethically so. That's, that, I think we should revisit that. That's, that's my thought.
No, we didn't. Can I say something?
Sure, absolutely.
We didn't, we did not finish that till this budget's done. This stuff is not right until this is, budget is done in public hearings.
Right, and that's what I'm saying...
Then she gets notified.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, we, I think we should...
So, it wasn't done till...
Okay.
So, this vote's over with.
Okay.
So, all right, he wants, you can make a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, reestablish the, that position, uh, salary, uh, to ten thousand dollars.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Oliver seconded. All right, any discussion?
Yes. The only concern, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, the only concern I had, and this can go to Dorcas, um, is that I'm very concerned about travel outside the city for taking the kids when we go, when you go to Hollywood. That was one thing that I felt was very important, that I'm not interested in the city having that responsibility of taking kids to Hollywood. Your salary was not the issue to me. It was the travel.
The Hollywood trip was in August and it's, it's done. We didn't go because we didn't have, I was told we didn't have the travel money to go. So, we didn't go to Hollywood.
No, I know, I know you didn't.
Right, that's the Florida League of Cities.
Right, I know that. I think personally, I'm, I'm more interested in keeping it local. It wasn't the salary, to my concern, it was the travel. So, um...
But that's part, Rosemary, just like...
We get, hold, hold, hold.
Can I just say that that's part of the...
No, no, not from back there, because we have, will you please let me say...
Can I have Dorcas, could I ask Dorcas to come up for this question?
She come to the podium, come, because it has to be recorded.
So, I can ask you a question, Dorcas, okay? I'm sorry, Ms. Dillard. Um, and I realize you didn't go this year. That, the salary was not my, personally, my concern. It was the travel. Keeping it local, going when they have this, when Florida League has the, um, convention here, is bringing the kids locally, but traveling, that was my concern with this, with your program.
Well, can I just say, part of one thing for young people, and that's not every young person, but part of the experiences that young people have is the opportunity to travel somewhere. So, every year, we would go to Tallahassee, we seen you in Tallahassee when we're able to go to Tallahassee. So, that, that is something that the, the kids really look forward to because of the experience. They get to meet the legislators and all those kinds of things. The one that would have been in Hollywood would have given them the opportunity to interact with people their ages. And the one thing I can say with COVID and the pandemic, kids have a real issue with socialization and being able to talk and all they're doing is texting. Those kinds of conventions give them opportunity to talk, just like we do, and, and come out and understand the process. When we don't do that, and, and not to say we couldn't do something here because we are, we're having the departments come and talk to them, we have all of those things, but those outside experiences are important also. And I, I, I get what you're saying, um...
Local.
But I would just add that on, that...
Okay, that's, that's my concern with, with, with your part of the budget, is I, keeping it local and not taking them, I don't feel at our taxpayers' issue is at this point, is to spend the money.
Okay, I, I get that. Well, what about the Tallahassee trip to...
I have a problem with Tallahassee too. I have a problem with us going to Tallahassee, quite frankly. It annoys me that I have to go talk to our legislators who we vote for. I've gotta go to Tallahassee to talk to them. That infuriate, infuriates me. Okay? So, I have a problem myself going there. Okay, so that's, um, but, and so I have a problem with bringing the kids. Sorry, that's, just my opinion.
Okay, that, that's fine, but again, I, I look at just having the experience, just being able to do something that some of the kids would never be able to do. And maybe planting a seed to say, this is something I wanna do.
Well, maybe they could come here.
So, that, I, I always look at, if you had a mentor, that that's, that whatever they did that took you out of your normal realm, gave you an opportunity that maybe you saw something different. And that's what I look at. My passion are you, are youth, so I, again, I'm gonna...
I understand.
Ra ra for them.
I'm, but I'm, I'm looking at that, that's one concern I have in the budget.
Okay.
Is the travel.
Does anybody else have a question about...
I'll take care of that. I'll ask them. Go ahead, just sit down.
I think, I think no one has questions for you.
Nobody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Rusty.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to...
Oh, yeah, okay.
Commissioner Firstner.
What is wrong with you?
Let's, let's...
Why do you have to say...
Let's stop, stop a minute, okay?
But can you just say that's enough?
Will you please let me run the meeting, okay? Let me run the meeting.
You're the boss, everybody knows you're the boss.
No, everybody that's you knows it maybe. I'm the boss sitting up here, so I'm not the boss, I'm the mayor. I'd love to have the respect of that, but only from certain people, don't.
I would love to have, I would love to have the respect of being a citizen of our town.
I'm tired of having to discuss this with you. I brought you up where Commissioner Wilson could talk to you. You have to be recorded. Thank you. You don't even know what I'm gonna vote in a few minutes. Just let me finish the meeting, okay?
I'm rude.
No, I'm not rude. I, you know, I've been around you for a long time, Dorcas, and you and, uh, we've got along great. But all of a sudden, when you want something, it's a different story. So, Commissioner Firstner.
Yes.
Do you have any comments?
Com- no comments.
All right, Commissioner Oliver.
When, when, when we, um, had this discussion in our, in the workshop, when we had this discussion in our workshop, um, again, I, I was the only one that voted for this and, and we talked about, uh, the breakdown of the, um, of the youth council. We had the, your salary and we also had, uh, ten thousand dollars for initiatives. And, uh, we were, we originally started using those initiatives to provide summer jobs, uh, for, for our kids, our youth in the city. And that, you know, that kinda ran its course and, uh, and we no longer have that. So, we wanted to look at taking that same ten thousand dollars that had been allocated and use it for, for travel expenses. Because I do remember in one meeting, uh, the, uh, uh, youth council had to come to us for additional funds just to, to take a, a trip, I think it was the Tallahassee trip. So, with, with that being said, um, we looked at the ten thousand dollar, and, and it's described as youth initiatives. So, youth initiatives have, it, it could be a broad range, a broad range of things. So, I hear Commissioner Wilson state that, you know, she wanna keep it local. And, uh, yes, there's a lot of, uh, local talent here that our kids can learn from. There's a lot of local talent that our, our, our kids can be mentored by. I agree with that wholeheartedly because we have a lot of great, uh, local elected officials that are willing to take these kids under their wing and do different things and give them different experiences. However, I do remember, uh, from the time I was maybe sixth grade, that we were going to Washington DC. And, and, and that hadn't stopped because kids still go there. I was just there, uh, a few weeks ago. Kids are still going to Washington DC. They're going by, by way of their schools, they're going by way of their city commissions, their city councils, so by whatever means that will give them that opportunity, they're going to DC. They're going to their state capitol. I, I haven't been to a state capitol where a kid has not, uh, been invited to come in and participate in that process, to talk to their state reps, to talk to their, uh, their state senators, to see how that works, to go in there. I had a kid describe to me what, what, how they felt when they walked into that chamber, the chamber that they see on TV all the time, when, when something's afoot and you see the governor there talking and you see their senator rah rah and talking about, uh, whatever it may be, and you see all these people walking around and they're trying to figure out what's going on. But to walk into that room and see it, it's a whole different experience for them. And I think that we should be able to afford our children, our future, our future. I think we should be able to afford our future, the opportunity to, to go to Tallahassee, to speak to our state reps, to learn that process, to get outside of the box here that we call Ocoy and to be able to experience those things. That's a wonderful experience for them. So, I have no problem with the travel expense to, to get our kids opportunities that they may, otherwise may not have. And I think that, that that's a great opportunity that, that we can afford them as their elected officials to do so. Because to be honest with you, uh, we are, I mean, there are bosses, you know, there are bosses. And, and, and especially when they become age to vote, they really become our, our bosses. And that's what I tell the kids. I say, you know, you, I work for you. What are some of the things that you have from a youth perspective? And that's what the youth council does. It gives them an opportunity to speak from a youth perspective and we have the opportunity to listen and be able to act on it. Can you go up to... Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, I saw a razor hand, so I...
You run the lead.
Is it okay that I just...
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just wanna ask one question. I never got a chance to go to Washington DC. I didn't go to Tallahassee till my daughter was in the fourth grade. I had to do fundraisers when I had to go somewhere. What happened to that? I don't understand. I had to work for everything I had to do my whole life, nothing was given to me. No city, I lived in Pine Hills, I went to Evans High School, we just had our fortieth high school reunion, it was fantastic. Why can't everybody just do fundraisers? Why, why do we have to have people, I don't understand why we have to have money handed to anybody. I never did, I always had to work for everything I had. I don't understand. I'm in tears just listening to all this. We've got to fix other things before we can start delegating to other stuff. We've got so much that needs to be fixed right here. This little boy just broke his tooth down the street from me because he tripped on a sidewalk. You know, I almost get hit walking out my car because people run the stop signs. My car almost gets run off the road because people are speeding. Can we back up and fix the things that need to be fixed first before we start doing all the other stuff? I just think we're stepping forward too far. I'm sorry, I mean, I am in tears, I'm getting anxiety, I'm gonna go because I, I just, I have to, I'm an, I'm an independent contractor and I pay more for my taxes as being an independent contractor than I have to pay for this, for the Orange County taxes, living here. And I just don't understand. I, I, I work so hard for what I have, I don't make a lot of money. I want to go to Washington DC. No one's giving me the money to go to Washington DC, nor do my kids ever get to go, ever. Tallahassee, it took fourth grade, I went with my daughter's school, and we had to earn the money to go. Earn the money, we did fundraisers to do that. That's what builds character in people. I'm sorry, I had to work for everything I had, and if we keep handing things to kids, they think they're just gonna keep getting it for free. We've got to work on that first. We've got to fix the issues we have first before we do the other. Ida would not want your jobs as volunteers or what you do. Oh my God, I just bless the ground that you walk on for that. It's hard, it's not easy. I just put together a 40th high school reunion, it wasn't easy. I didn't get paid for doing that, and I understand that. But, I mean, you know, I don't have cable. I have air TV, because I can't afford to have the cable. I don't understand. I, I, I just, I think things are overlooked. Let's fix the other things that are obvious before we start putting money out for other things. I just think we need to backtrack. I'm sorry, I, I hope I'm not speaking out of line, please forgive me. I love each and every one of you equally, and I feel all the volunteers are amazing. But we've got to back up. I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry. I agree, we just gave a hundred thou- we're just putting a hundred thousand dollars in for activities. I have a problem with that. I want sidewalks. I want sidewalks. But we are gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars, and I don't believe in, I agree with you, spending, sending someone to Tallahassee or sending someone somewhere, a, a kid is not a city budgeted item.
Well, I, I, I still have the floor, but again, uh, that, this is what I love about this. This is the perfect opportunity for our children to learn these kind of things. What she just said, she have an opinion, she has an opinion, she has a right to have that opinion. And we have a right to, a, a, as a, as a former military member, I would defend that, that, that opinion, that right to the death. Every single time, without question. And this is amazing, this is what makes our country so great. Because she has a, an opinion that's different from my opinion. And she has the right to speak that opinion. She has the very, the right to speak that. And, and again, I disagree, but she has a right to, to that opinion. I'm not closed minded to her idea or her thoughts, because fundraising does actually, uh, uh, come into play when it comes to a lot of things. I've sold a lot of candy bars for my grandkids, and I'm sure that some of us have done the same thing, so I agree with that. But nonetheless, I still believe that we should be able to afford our kids the right to be able to, uh, take a trip to Tallahassee or four legal cities that will broaden their horizons when it comes to learning about civics and learning about what just took place. Learn that there is a process, everyone has an opinion.
Have they been to the Senator's office right here in Orlando? Have, have, have the, you want a Senator Tallahassee, just as this woman says, but they're, have they been to the Senator and Representative's office right here in Orlando? No, they go to Tallahassee.
No, but I haven't even had the local commissioner come to our meeting, and you all.
I know you have us on your schedule, but I'm asking, you go to Tallahassee.
I don't know why I have to invite you all when you know yourself. So again.
You go to Tallahassee to see the representatives, but you won't go here. There's a problem, so I.
All right.
That's.
All right. I will just. That's my turn. If you disagree with anybody, you're wrong. That's the way life is nowadays. You don't disagree, if you disagree, you're wrong. I still believe in what we're supposed to do as citizens, and Lady and Mr. Jordan said, it's about what we can do for citizens and raising money. But nobody, I know every time one of my children or grandchildren goes somewhere, they have to raise money through the school. Or don't, we donate, I donate money. It's like now, it's a lot easier, just say, give it to me, and give it to us, and go ahead. Took a poll of all the citizens in this city, they're not gonna go along with that, but that's another story. It'll get, it'll get known all over. I, I, uh.
I'll make a motion.
For the life of me, I can't understand why one person can say something and the other person can't make a comment. You know, it's buddy, 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 when you're out at functions, and they hug you on the shoulder, and, oh yeah, and then if you come up and you don't want to agree with what they're agreeing, same way with some of the things we got here in employees. You know, if you don't agree with what they want, then you're wrong. But you set up here to do stuff for citizens, which means a guardian of the money. You're supposed to guard the money.
Can I make a motion, Mayor?
Yeah. Well, there's a motion on the floor.
Oh, okay.
There's a motion on the floor. All right. Motion on the floor was, can you read it off, Melanie?
There's a motion that was made by Commissioner Brinson, seconded by Commissioner Oliver, move to retain the budget for Dorcas Ellard at ten thousand.
Seconded by Commissioner Oliver. Let's vote.
Oh, I guess. I'm gonna make a motion, I'd like to make a motion after that. I'd like to reduce the travel budget, that's what I said before, for the, um, what is the travel budget right now? I was trying to find this, it's for the youth.
We put ten thousand dollars in.
That was known for salary. That was for, that was for.
Oh, there's ten thousand put in for the, uh, for the, uh, what, that what you said, Commissioner Oliver, ten thousand dollars?
That was for, that was for Dorcas' salary, that was what the question.
We just voted on salary, but there's, the ten, other ten dollars was for youth initiatives, which would be used for travel.
I'd say, I, I would like to make a motion to reduce that to five thousand with not allowing, um, anything but local travel.
They do? Motion made by Commissioner Wilson. You're his second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Fursten. There is, I, I know, we, we used to have the Senator and State Representative offices in our city hall, in our other city hall. So it's easy for these, to go there. Plus, you can go to Orange County governments and other cities. I think you ought to go to other cities, cities and look at their government runs when they do those things with these, some of the things they do. All right, so anybody else comments?
Page fifty-four.
Well, um, I, I, I would say this, uh, Mayor, and it goes, and it goes back to the, the, um, the citizens' comment about fundraising and what she said, she brought up a great point. We did that. Like I say, I've sold a lot of candy bars, M and M's and cookies and all kind of stuff. So I support the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts. I buy anything that they, they, they bring me, even though, even if I don't like it, I buy it. So by reducing the budget, which I, I disagree with, by reducing that to, to, by five thousand dollars, I disagree with that. Um, but, uh, if it's voted upon and we do not approve it, but I'm hoping that it would get approved so we don't have to keep, uh, hem and hawing over, over such a, uh, just a, a miniscule trivial issue here. This, we got so many other things that she talked about. We got sidewalks to talk about, and repairs, and water drainage projects, and so many other things we got to get to. We're just, we're hem and hawing over just something that's just very miniscule, and it, and it's for our youth. Which again, they're gonna be ones that's sitting up here trying to determine, uh, what's gonna happen to our mileage rate. Those same, those same citizens that we're denying the, uh, opportunities and possibility of travel will be sitting here before us, and we'll be sitting down there, sitting at home somewhere, trying to figure out, well, well, why can't they lower our mileage rate? Or why they can't do this? And what I'm gonna say, I remember going on a trip to Tallahassee. I remember going to meet a state senator, state rep, and it affected me so much that I wanted to get involved in, uh, my local government. So again, I, I, I disagree with it, and I can agree to disagree, but, um, not be disagreeable.
I just believe that we, um, keep it local, they can go, you can see your representative right here, you can see your state senator right here. You can go to Orange County Commission, you can meet your commissioners there, the ones at Orange County. So I'm standing for my motion, so.
We got a second. Commissioner Fursten, second?
Yes.
All right, let's vote.
A reverse motion.
We're supposed to reduce it to five thousand.
Okay.
Without lo- and only local travel.
Everybody voting?
Uh huh. So we got three.
All right.
I would also like to make another motion.
All right.
Um, I'd like to make the motion to reduce the, uh, HRDB from a hundred thousand to thirty thousand.
We, we just voted on that.
Yeah, but I'm making the motion the opposite way. I may, I, I feel I can do that. Am I correct, Scott?
Is she correct about that?
Am I correct?
If that's the case, we can keep going back and forth. If that's the case.
That's what we've done already.
So, so that, that's.
We've been going on and on about this. Because we've already got thirty thousand in the budget for it, there's already thirty thousand in support services. So that's the reason I'm, I'm saying that. And without a business plan, that's the reason I'm coming back to that.
So, so we're going back and forth.
That's all right.
You can reconsider the item, but it has to be someone that voted for it to make the motion to reconsider. If I don't remember who voted.
Commissioner Fursten voted, Commissioner Oliver voted, Commissioner Brinson voted.
Would need, one of those three would need to make the motion to reconsider.
Anybody reconsider? Vote on it again.
If that's the case, then I'm gonna make another motion after that, then if I lost that one. Um, I'd like to increase the, um, sidewalk, if we're gonna go the mileage rate. I'd like to increase the sidewalk by fifty thousand dollars. Fifty. Uh, it's at two fifty, I want three hundred. Because our residents want their sidewalks fixed. Well, then, this is your chance, and this is a chance that you're gonna bring the mileage rate right up. So if that's what everyone's trying to do at this point, I'm just gonna join the bandwagon here and say, let's go for it. I hear we want sidewalks. If you want sidewalks, well then, you gotta speak up and say, yes, you want them, three hundred thousand. Want your sidewalks fixed, or?
What's the current budget for sidewalk projects?
Two fifty.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Is that the, the complete budget for sidewalks and repairs?
That's right now, we went up to two hundred and fifty thousand, correct?
No, I think it's more than that. Can, can you, can you, can you?
I believe that we're up to two fifty.
What is the complete budget for sidewalks?
The current contracted budget, um, that we have in the proposed is two hundred thousand dollars. There's also forty thousand dollars in the operations side for continual, is if, if we get enough people to pour concrete again. But right now, it's at two hundred.
Two hundred, okay. Then two fifty. That will be two ninety with the forty you have.
Correct.
So I, I made that motion.
Anybody second it?
I, I would like to amend that motion. I. You raised it to fifty thousand dollars?
I want to raise it fifty thousand. If we're going to do, if we're going to, if we're going.
Okay.
In order to answer our residents' pleas for sidewalks, then we need to raise the amount, fifty thousand dollars.
I second that motion to raise it by fifty thousand dollars. But I also want to have the city manager and the finance director shave off the amount from the police, uh, capital improvement and the fire capital improvement projects, those five million dollar projects, balance it out so that we come out at, uh, zero neutral and leave this mileage rate at four point nine five.
Well, you can't have four point nine five when you just made a hundred thousand dollars, which the mileage rate went up to, what?
A while ago, sir. I, I would not, I would not, while y'all talking, while he's talking, I, I don't want to cut back on the fire and police department. Those are the two most important things we got, besides the sewage facility.
They're projects that are in the out years, and we can either make that money up or we can revise those projects. It's not a hard five million on each of those projects. We can modify the, uh, plans on both of those projects. We're only talking about taking fifty thousand dollars off of each one.
All you're talking about?
Or seventy-five thousand off of each one. That will cover the increases in the sidewalks and the increases to the HRDB. And it should leave it at zero neutral, is that correct? Where it does not affect the mileage rate?
All you're doing is borrowing from, you're borrowing from your PayPal. And next year, you're putting it on the next, whoever comes in next as a commissioner, you're putting it on them to clean it up. And when you start borrowing like that, that's poor business sense, in my opinion.
I think we could do those two projects for that minimal amount that we're taking away from each of them.
I don't want to discuss taking money away from the fire department or the police department stuff, until we get the biz. Everything, right now, concrete is higher than it ever was, even with some of the other stuff going down. I don't want to sit here and penny ante the police or fire department, which is two of them, you heard that was what? Forty-nine point something percent of what our deal is, is that public safety, public safety is for the citizens. I don't want to cut back on that. If we're gonna put, build something and do something, we want it to be a right place. So I'm not for that motion, but you made the motion, so you.
Let's, let's keep that as a separate motion. I think we have a motion on the table right now.
Well, he wanted to make an amendment to it.
Yeah, I don't think it's appropriate as an amendment to that motion. I think that would be, I think we need to do that. If we're gonna consider that, that would have to be a separate.
All right, read the motion we're gonna vote on.
The motion would be to increase the budget for sidewalks from two hundred thousand dollars to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right. You seconded that, right?
I'll second that.
All right. Let's vote.
Are we finished with discussion?
Yeah, let's vote. All right, that carries your answer. All right. Next.
As long as you want to be, I guess. I've sent you all the time with it, if you like.
Okay. I, I have a, a question for the city manager or the finance director. How much will we be carrying in, uh, contingency? Not much.
The current, um, contingency balance is fifty-four thousand.
Fifty-four, okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna take, we're gonna take a five minute break.
I certainly am. Okay, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start this, this, uh, quarter of my, of my talk by saying this. Uh, gracious disagreement is something that we all would love to cherish, but in business and in government, even in households, that's not always the case. So there's gonna be some heated debates, discussions, especially when we're talking about money and, and serving, and the capacity in which we serve in. I would ask you to be patient with us and understand that the passion that you see that we're sharing up here and we're exhibiting up here is because we care. And so be mindful of that. And I also say that we should also try to be the person that we needed when we were young, if that makes sense to anyone. Now, with that said, I know we had talked about a couple of things. One of the things I saw in the budget, uh, that really caught my eye was, i- if anyone out there has actually, uh, looked at the budget, and it's considerable, is a line on, a budget line on the, in a budget that reads transferred out, right? And so generally speaking, when I see a transfer out, I'm also looking for a transfer in. Because money is leaving from one fund or one, one department, it should be landing somewhere else, right? And so if you look at the budget for a Koye Music Festival, you're probably not gonna see any funding there. But rest assured that the city is, in fact, uh, helping that, that event, uh, get kickstarted by, uh, dedicating money to that. So that's important for the citizens to know that we are, in fact, uh, supporting, uh, the events that we were supporting in the past as well. Let's see here. Uh, I had a lot of questions, most of the questions, as, as anybody who's, who, uh, seen me up here before, know that I ask most of my questions behind the scenes, uh, because that's just the kind of guy I am. And I have asked a bunch of questions. I think the, uh, finance director and the city manager and others will, will attest to that. And then my questions were answered, for the most part, satisfactorily. But if there's any question that you may have as a citizen, you know, this is the time to ask. I said this before, uh, a few months ago, and I'll say it again. For advisory boards, you got to make your ask of the cit- of this commission early. You can't wait until now to start making these big asks, because this is what happens, right? You got to put those asks in, in those, you got to be on the same sheet. You got to be, have a concerted effort when you're doing what, what it is that you're doing in your advisory board or in your capacity as, as you serve the city, whether you're elected, whether you're an employee, a contractor, or what have you. So be mindful, uh, that we're here, we're trying to, uh, move the city forward, which I would, I was, forget I said that, we are moving the city forward, we're not trying. We're actually moving the city forward in the right direction. And so there's gonna be some, still gonna be some growing pains, uh, but when we're talking money, I think I made two comments, and we went into probably an hour plus of discussion around it. That's what it's supposed to be like. We're not supposed to be rubber stamped, I've said that before. We're not supposed to just take what the city, uh, staff, uh, puts in front of us and just rubber stamp it as a goal. That's not what we're hired to do. When we each entered in our contest to run for elected office, we took an oath to protect and serve the city, and I think that's what we're doing up here. And we will disagree. And some of us would disagree more than others, but we, there will be, and there should be disagreement. If we up here not, not, uh, disagreeing with one another, you probably should look really hard at reelecting us, because something is going on. We should be up here disagreeing from time to time. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I do. Not much, but, um, first of all, I do not want to see us pilfering any money from our ARPA funds for our, um, from the police and fire. That is wrong with, we have the ARPA funds, and that's where they were designated, and we should be leaving them there. Second of all, um, I'm gonna go back to HRDB. We've already changed the mileage rate by going up to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, then why aren't we, if that's the rate we're giving to HRDB, then support services should be able to drop the fifty thousand dollars out of their budget. Al should be able to drop fifty thousand dollars out of your budget to make up for what we're giving HRDB to use for their events. Because all we're doing now, we've just made, we've just made HRDB events a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, correct?
Yes.
So, um, if we've given a hun- now we've gone from a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand. Which, by giving a hundred thousand and your fifty thousand, not yours, but your, the fif- the fifty thousand in your budget now increases HRDB to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
No, I, I believe what happened was, it went from like the forty-five thousand dollars that it was to a hundred thousand dollars. So that there's actually been an increase of fifty-five thousand, but.
No, that's not my understanding. My understanding is that it was an added one hundred thousand dollars, which would then take.
No, it was, it was increasing from the existing amount up to a hundred thousand dollars. But I, but I think you're talking about, that's different than Al's budget.
No, that's what, that's confusion.
It's put in my department, HRDB itself can't spend any money.
Okay.
So, so their money is actually allocated in community promotion.
So your, your budget for the HRDB board coming into this meeting was what, forty something thousand?
Right.
So now it's a hundred thousand.
Now it's a hundred thousand. You, you can reduce my salary by fifty thousand dollars starting November first.
Duly noted.
What does that, what does that do to our mileage rate at this point? Because.
At this point, adding, um, fifty-five for HRDB and adding fifty thousand for sidewalks, it's an increase to, of, uh, to the mileage rate of point zero two three two, or it would take it to four point nine seven three two.
Okay. Yeah, well, you have some.
We've been interrupting each other.
Yeah, go ahead, feel free.
I, I want Ms. Hart, who's, she wanted to make a comment while I was going, I missed her while we were dealing with the diversity fund, so I'm going to call her back up, the chairman, Ms. Hart. I apologize.
Thank you. I just want to clarify some things before this meeting is over. And to Mr., to Commissioner Firstner, let me be clear, when I came up here, I introduced myself as Lori Hart, as the HRDB chair of this committee, this advisory board. And on our meeting, our last meeting, I was given information of what was proposed already for the budget that you all were looking at already. Commissioner Oliver mentioned that he proposed a hundred thousand dollars for multicultural events, and that we can also have someone come and talk about that, and to ask for those funds. From my understanding, the multicultural, the hundred thousand dollars for multicultural events was funds for any advisory board to ask for, to use throughout the year, to have those funds set aside, to have those funds so that if they want to do something in the community for any advisory board, those funds will be readily available. Those funds were not directly only for HRDB. The minutes should note that. And if I'm incorrect, I apologize, but I asked this two times to get clarity. So it was the budget, the proposed budget for HRDB, and the hundred thousand dollars that Commissioner Oliver said that he put, he asked for multicultural events, not just for HRDB. So unfortunately, due to personal obligations, I got here a little late, so I don't know what was presented by Mr. Riska. And I'm sorry that it appears that people's coming from HRDB, giving you bits and pieces. But as the chair, I take responsibility for that. So therefore, I thank Mayor for allowing me to come back up to give you the information that was presented at our last meeting. Also, Commissioner Oliver, and to all commissioners, not that I have to say this, but let me make it abundantly clear. I would love to come to the meetings on Tuesdays, but my priority is my family. I'm currently working on my doctoral degree, and my classes are on Tuesday nights, and that's non-negotiable. So therefore, I was really happy to know that the meeting was changed to tonight, so therefore I would have the opportunity to come and participate and to be able to speak on, on behalf of the HRDB. So therefore, if you don't see me on Tuesdays, it's because I'm home studying so that I can better myself to be able to be a help to these precious kids in the community. So I just wanted to get, clarify that as to what we discussed in our last meeting. So what was presented on behalf tonight on HRDB, I'm sorry I was late, but I don't know what that was, but I, I was abundantly clear as to what I asked for tonight. There was two, the HRDB funds that was proposed already, and a hundred thousand dollars that was supposed to be presented for, are put aside, are requested to be put aside for multicultural events for any advisory boards, not just HRDB. So thank you for your time.
Wait, can I ask you a question, if you don't mind?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Hart, who controls that? See, this is where I'm having a lot of problems, okay? Because we are getting, it's all over the board, okay? It's been all over the board for months. But, okay, just say I'm on recreation board, and I want to do something that's multicultural. Who is going to, who do I go to to tell me, yes, you can have this money, or no, you can't? Who is, who is, there's, there's too many questions here. And this is where I have problems with this hundred thousand dollars, because it doesn't seem to be going, I can't figure out where it's going. Who's going to be the leader of it? Okay, you are, we, I come, I'm on the board, and I come to you, and you say, no, we don't like that one. That can happen, correct? I'm just saying, I'm just using hypothetical. I want to put an event on, and we come to you, and you say, no, we don't like that one, we've got control of the hundred thousand dollars, because we're going to spend it on what we want. See, there's just two, there's, as I said before, there's no business plan. I don't see where it's going. Do you, do you follow where I'm, what I'm getting at? Because I'm lost.
I do understand what you're saying, but as I stated before, those funds that was proposed, a hundred thousand dollars, was for multicultural, for any advisory board. So therefore, those funds will be apparently held by you all to approve this thing as, to approve any event that's multicultural, if you're going to allow the, any advisory board to have that or not. Because we are HRDB, that doesn't mean, I mean, we're an advisory board, and I made that abundantly clear. We advise, we have no power to determine what happens. It comes back to you. Everything that we do comes back to this council. So therefore, any funds related to anybody asking to do anything have to come back to you, and for you all to decide on. So it's not my decision to make, maybe suggest, or advise, but eventually, I send everybody, everybody back to the council, because I don't have that power, I don't have that authority. So it's not, my main thing I wanted to emphasize here is that those funds were not dedicated to HRDB. It was dedicated to the advisory boards for any activity they wanted. From my understanding, what Mr. Oliver put out there is that if they wanted to do an event, those funds, if approved, pull aside for them to be able to have funds readily available for that.
But that's not what we voted on. My, my understanding, and this can be cleared up by-
And that's why I'm here to clarify that.
Okay, okay.
Because I was confused as to how you guys were voting on.
My understanding is, we voted to give HRDB one hundred thousand dollars to put on multicultural events at their, basically at their pleasure, okay? That is, what you're asking now is not what we voted on.
I didn't ask for anything.
No, no, I'm not saying, what, what you're telling us now is not what we voted on. You didn't ask us for that, okay? But what we voted on was not what we're being, what you're suggesting to us now. So I feel as though that vote we took is wrong, because you're not, it's not asked from HRDB, it's asked for any multicultural event from any board within the city, any advisory board within the city, correct?
Yes, and let me, let me make this abundantly clear. I am sensitive to the people of this community. You work hard. You work hard, you pay your taxes. So for, and, and I, I expressed this in the meeting, there's no way I will come and ask, after there's a proposed budget already to do the events that we're doing in the community, to ask for an additional hundred thousand dollars. The funds were proposed, so to ask for another hundred thousand dollars for the taxpayers to pay that? No way. So I'm passionate about that. You may disagree with that, but as the chair, I take responsibility, even before I got here, whatever happened. But my thing is, I don't think it's fair to ask for an additional hundred thousand dollars for HRDB, when funds were already put in place to approve the events that we were going to do. Because it's not fair to the people of this community. I've been here for twenty-nine years. I've seen the change, and I'm not going anywhere. And you know what? I'm going to put it out there, yes, I ran for city commissioner for District Four, because I care. I care about the people of this community. So with that being said, I'm, I'm not, as I expressed in the meeting then, I didn't think that was something to do, to ask for an additional hundred thousand dollars in addition to what we had already in place. So when you, when you voted, I had to unfortunately leave to take care of my daughter for a moment, but, so I don't know what transpired there, but when I got back, you all were discussing and voting on something that I was really, I'm not sure about as to why.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the clarification, I think that, but unfortunately, I can't make a motion to change that, because I was on the, I guess, offensive instead of defensive? Is that the right?
We're on the losing side.
I was on the losing side, right? So I can't, even though I tried.
Commissioner Wilson, may I, may I say something? Because I heard my name several times in what Ms. Hart had to say. First and foremost, let me congratulate you on going back to school and, and seeking higher education.
Thank you.
So congratulations on that. As I stated before, and, and I'll state it again, just for clarification purposes, you did state that you had things, that you had to take care of on Tuesdays, and, and you couldn't be here. I understand that, that makes sense. So that's why you designated Mr. Riska to come here, the board designated Mr. Riska to come here to do that presentation.
No, Mr. Oliver, I mentioned that I was going to be here, and I also informed Mr. Riska that I was going to be here.
I sat in that same meeting, and you said you could not make it, so-
No, that was on Tuesday, sir.
Maybe there's a, maybe there's a misunderstanding, but nonetheless, if that was the case, she, she didn't have to be here to make that presentation. So why did she take that time to put that presentation together on behalf of the HRDB? When, that, that doesn't make sense to me, because you're here, but she's here as, as well. So the board should have, should have came together, and what I heard in that meeting, and I sat in that meeting, I was there from the beginning to the end, that one person would come and present to the HR, from the HRDB, on behalf of the HRDB, to this commission. Now, all of a sudden, you're saying you could have been here. Well, the date never changed.
No, sir.
When I, when I was there-
No, sir, I'm not going to let you accuse me of something.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
I'm just going to just stand out there. I said that I was going to be here.
I understand, but can I finish, please?
Yes, you may.
And then when I finish, then you talk.
Thank you.
That's how communication goes. I talk, you listen, you talk, I listen.
Just for him, Mr. Oliver. Let's keep it, didn't it?
So what I'm saying is just, just that. I, I, that's what I heard, so if you want to agree to disagree, I, I can go with that too.
That's fine, sir.
But nonetheless, the, what we voted on is, is not a separate hundred thousand dollars. What we did was, we took a budget that was already in place, and we just increased it to a hundred thousand dollars. That's exactly what she presented, that's exactly what we voted on, and, and now there's a hundred thousand dollars sitting in, in a, a, a social services budget that could be used for multicultural events. So again, if the police department, or the fire department, or utilities come together and say, we want to do a multicultural event, well, guess what? You know, they can, and if we, if we look at it in its totality, the HRDB, let's look at their mission, look at what your mission is. So if you have another department in the city that wants to do a multicultural event, it's only right that they should go to the HRDB, because that's their mission. And it, it's not saying that they're controlling the money, the money's there controlled by the city. It's just all you're doing is saying, you know what, I think that's a great project, let's go with it, let's partner up, and let's make it happen.
I feel as though I have been, as a commissioner sitting here, I feel as though what has transpired regarding this money is deplorable to me. What you're asking for, I appreciate. But I feel as though we have been turned, things have been turned around, and we are now talking residents' money.
Absolutely.
And we're arguing over this, when we should just go back to what you asked for in the beginning, which is in the budget. You're not asking for any more than what's in the budget, correct?
Absolutely.
And so, but now we've been, for some reason, we have now been turned around to give an extra fifty thousand, or whatever the amount is. It's wrong. I, I, I just, I'm sorry, it just-
Well, you could be done by whoever voted for it, could you say that?
I, I, I'm just annoyed that this commission did this when the chairman of the board that we are allocating the funds to didn't even ask for it.
As I would like to say before I sit down and, but yet to leave, once again, that's how the discussion went on, as I recall, on the last meeting. Like I said, what Mr. Oliver said, basically, once again, you know, it's not about taking money from the citizens. So like I said, you know, some of you all may disagree with that. That's okay. I'm cool with that. But my thing is, the budget was proposed with the events that we were going to do, and nothing more. So if anyone came, I mean, the money's been allocated, and if somebody, you know, do another motion to reverse that, but in the meantime, if anyone come and want to do something multicultural, fine, I will listen. And if it's something that we can do, as we agree on, because it's, I'm not a one-person show, it's a group. We are, we are advisory board. And if they want to do that, then we'll implement that, and we'll go forward with that. But in the meantime, I just wanted to clarify how that meeting went this last time, that we, I mean, the last meeting that we met from there. So therefore, as I stated, I don't know what was presented, but I take responsibility for it, because I am the chair. But I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to talk, to, so I can clarify that.
Thank you, Ms. Hart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all have a good night, thank you.
All right, where are we at?
Do you have to be called to make a public comment?
I got a section here that says, I told you earlier, there's a place in here where I'll call back again.
I'm just curious, because we kind of got a little bit scattered, so I'm not sure. I'm trying to follow what I'm going.
Well, when you scatter it out, sir, and everybody gets up and starts talking, then we got to let Phil talk.
I'm not good at that.
Okay. No, there's another part in here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm finished, because I'm rather, I'm extremely annoyed over all that's transpired from this. We've gone on for probably an hour, an hour more than we need to go, when this was never asked for. And that is, this is a budget. This is, when, nothing was asked for, but we give it, to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars, we should be ashamed of ourselves. Ashamed.
All right, we're, Melody, where are we at?
Still entertaining motions, sorry, amendments to the budget.
The, all right. Anybody got any more amendments? I think we've amended enough. Rob probably can still work on the budget, help us with what we're doing, but it's a shame. I don't pay attention to what, I, I, I think it's the same citizens that understand about the budget project, process. One of the main things I've been asked is about the taxes, with what's going on in the city, and state, and nation with taxes, we need to lower taxes. If we've got a city that sits in the, in the money, where we've got enough money to do it, why do we keep overcharging citizens and putting more stuff in? You get, you know, I, I for the life of me don't understand that, but it'll come out in budget, and it's come out in the next in time, but we'll find out. But any more amendments to the budget?
Are you going down the line? I know-
I just said, is there any more amendments to the budget?
Mr. Firstner, do you have anything? Okay, well, I'll, I'll-
I'll go. Page eleven of our budget, I still have, I still have questions about this. We list the commissioners as full-time, and we had many, many discussions sitting up here stating we're part-time. Why are we still listing the commissioners as full-time? And, and I know, I know one thing that was said, that, that it's because we get benefits. That, that makes no sense. So if you're going to, if we're going to have these discussions and say we're one thing, list us as that. Because everybody up here has sat here and agreed that this is a part-time job with full-time hours. So we need to list, list it that way. It should be listed that way. Everyone up here has said it. And if you want, now if you want to backtrack and change your mind, you can do that, that's fine, but we should be listed as part-time employees, because that's what we agreed upon. So do I need to make a motion to do that, or can we just do it?
Well, you're going to make a motion to change the text from-
Well, I'd just like to make a motion and list these commissioners as part-time commissioners as opposed to full-time, because full-time to me means something totally different than part-time.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Commissioner Oliver, signed by Commissioner Renssens. Commissioner, I mean, city manager, does that affect the insurance?
No.
That, I'm asking.
It shouldn't.
I'm, I'm asking the city manager.
Okay.
Please. Are you, are you talking? Yeah.
Health insurance, Mayor.
I want to make sure that-
No, it won't affect the health insurance, because we're self-insured.
I think we're all in order to donate our salaries. We want to get in to do it stuff here.
I am a commissioner.
You can make that motion.
I am not a, I am a commissioner.
Yeah.
Whether I put, I was on vacation this week, you didn't get anything out of me this week.
What?
Yeah, I know. So I am a commissioner, whether I'm part-time or full-time, I am here to serve my residents. So when we start getting picky about a word, part-time or full-time, why does it just become, I'm a commissioner? I never tell people I'm part-time or full-time. I am their commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, you had no problem saying-
And that all it leads to is, I know, Commissioner, you've wanted us to increase the salary for this job, saying it's a full-time, I disagree. You call me a commissioner.
Okay, well, just for clarity, at one point, there was four of us that wanted to do it.
All right.
So, so again, motion on the floor.
Vote for, what are we voting for here?
To change it to part-
To change- To change that word.
To part.
Because words mean something. Yes, they do.
Motion failed.
I'll make a motion that you just write down, Commissioner. I mean, what, it's it's all in the term and.
Words mean something. Yes, they do.
Not always.
Word always means something. Every word that you say means something. All right, so let's go to page.
Oh, that was a real motion. I want to make a motion that we just.
Oh, that was a real motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, we just write commissioner and mayor and commissioner, whether it's full-time, part-time, or.
Did you make it? She made a motion, we just say commissioner.
Commissioner, mayor.
Mayor and commissioners, not part-time or full-time. That's a good one. Do you have a second?
I have a question.
What's that?
I'll second it.
I have a question, comment.
Thank you.
From from the legal standpoint or the budgetary standpoint, is that proper?
Yeah, I don't think we're not changing, not gonna change the mileage, it's not gonna change any of the dollars. We're just saying what the budget.
Okay.
Motion's made by Commissioner Wilson, seconded by the mayor, Mayor Potem with the gavel. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, let's vote.
Oh, I'm, yes, I voted wrong.
Uh-uh, too late. I'm sorry.
Can you need a reset? Reset.
Yeah, reset. Mine's way over out of the way.
I might be pushing yours, I don't know.
Yes.
Yes, gotta vote again.
Did everyone vote?
We still voting?
I think we all voted, but I think we probably need to make sure that the city manager and the finance director understand what it is that we're doing.
It passed.
I am a commissioner.
Woo, we are commissioners.
I am a commissioner. I'm not part-time or full-time. I'm just a commissioner.
Okay.
As long as Ms. Roberts knows what the motion was and can change that in the text, I'm good with it.
I understand that on page eleven and where otherwise indicated that the commissioners and the mayor will only be listed as one and four and one, and they will not have part-time or full-time designations.
I'm good with that.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
Page eighteen, there's a line item on page eighteen on the general government services for equipment for eighty-five thousand dollars. I'm just trying to figure out what that breakout is. What is that for? What is that equipment for? Did somebody answer that question?
They're pulling it up.
What department are you in?
I'm on, I'm on page eighteen. It's Capitol Projects for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three by department. It's under general government services. And there's a line item that says equipment, eighty-five thousand dollars, and I just want to know what the equipment is. That's all.
That's money associated with the build-out of the infrastructure of this facility here in terms of additional things that we might need to acquire relative to finishing the the job.
So did we come over budget in this building? Are we over the budget?
No, this is, this is, this is a separate situation as far as it's not fixed to the building. This would be things like if we needed additional equipment to build out our training facility. We have a facility over here
Okay.
that's set up for being able to do a training of multiple staff persons. We've not put any equipment in there.
Gotcha. So we may or may not use these funds. Possibility.
Possibly, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. That was easy. There's also on page nineteen, under Public Works and Maintenance, there is a line item that says Lake Shore Center Roof Repairs. Isn't that a new building that we just spent? How much, how much we spent on that building? Director of Finance, do you know how much we spent on the Lake Shore Center?
I believe it came in at about four point two million.
Four point two million dollars. Why do we need roof repairs?
There's some areas that developed some leaks. It's the type of roof, it just needs to be fixed. It might have been an issue in the design, but there's some leaks, and it's significant because it's a commercial roof.
So it's a, it's a design, a flaw design. If that's the case, shouldn't it be under warranty?
It's out of warranty now.
And we need, we need forty-three thousand dollars to fix a roof that, on a building that we just purchased for four point two million dollars. See, we talked about being good stewards of 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 money and good stewards of our citizens and responsible for them, but yet we're finna spend forty-three thousand dollars, we hemming and hawing over ten thousand dollars and down five thousand dollars, and now forty-three thousand dollars on a brand-new building, and that, which is not under warranty anymore. So.
How old is that building? Because it's a building that was built and then it was added on to. So we're talking, we're probably ten years ago that that building was built originally. Now, I mean, I don't call that brand-new. So when was that, when was the first phase of it?
Eight years ago.
Yeah, twenty fourteen.
Eight years ago.
So we just, we just stated that we're out of warranty, so the warranty wouldn't fix it. So if we were still in warranty, it wouldn't fix that, that, that roof, that leak. So if you want to be upset about something, be upset about things like that. That's fine. Thank you. Page twenty, nope, you already covered that. Thank you. You got that one. That's okay. A lot of stuff we've already covered, which is good. I got page twenty-three on the recreation. Twenty-three on the recreation, there's a line item for equipment for forty-five thousand dollars. What is that for? And what I'm getting at, I'm looking, I'm hoping that we have some kind of set aside for maybe a stage or a stage and lighting and hoping that we would invest in something like that, but I just wanted to know what that was for.
It says it right next to it, light tower and enclosed trailer, twenty-five and twenty.
This is where? Okay, there we go. So what is that for? What exactly is that?
Light tower, we use for events, all our events. We rent them all the time from the company out here on Maguire Road. So we're just gonna try to start owning our own lights.
So would that include a stage or just lights?
No, it's lights and a trailer, enclosed trailer.
An enclosed trailer? What would a trailer be used for?
All our equipment.
Oh, because it's for storage?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Answer that question. Oh, I'm sorry, Mark, please, one last thing. We talked about exercise equipment for Coventry Park. Were we able to look at the park to see would it, would it actually be able to sustain equipment around it for exercise? I know you said you were gonna go out and take a look at it and.
We looked at it. The issue out there, there's no water, no restrooms. It's neighborhood park. There's not really a path to walk. It's something we can look at adding in the future.
Okay.
That would help out because, you know, people are working out, they want to have a place to go to the restroom, they want a place to get a water from the fountain or something. But it's something we can definitely look for in the future. At this budget year, probably not with, we need some other things out there to.
Okay.
Kickstart it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Take care of that. Okay, page twenty-six. I'm looking under, on the utilities administration, actually, no, it probably wouldn't come under utilities. But what I'm looking for, I'm looking to see, have we, have we designated any funds for a claw truck? I know we've had that conversation. We've been talking about it for some time now, but have we?
That wouldn't be in utilities. That would be in public works.
In public work. So have we done that? Because that'll, that'll, that'll cover me later on in this, I can scratch it off.
Yeah, how are we, were we gonna bring that up? We probably won't get to it till the second meeting now. We had the proposal of what the costs would be and different ways that we would, we would run the program. So that's a discussion we have to have now at some point, either this meeting or the next.
So so do we have any funds set aside so we can actually have that conversation and maybe allocate it one way or the other?
So what we had planned on doing, if that's something that you all want to do, we wouldn't be able to do the assessment until next year's budget. So we'd have to figure out somewhere, if we wanted to start at mid-year or something, we'd have to figure out, borrow the funds to get it up and running. Maybe mid-year or next year, if that's something you all want to do, and repay those funds from wherever we borrow them from in the tax bills next November. We have to get that in, correct me if I'm wrong, Al, we have to get those some April-May timeframe. We have to have the roll ready to go. If that's something you want to do, put that on the tax bill to, to do the improved bulk pickup.
Oh, just far from the.
And I know it's, it's an issue that that we've been talking about for a while now, and I would like to see some kind of plan where it's not.
I think we had planned on discussing that at some point, but we have to have that discussion yet during this meeting or the next meeting.
We talked about that at another meeting and, as a matter of fact, at our, at our, at our workshop, there was a discussion about this claw truck, and the amount of money that we talked about, we talked about it would be three dollars and eighty-six cents per household that would affect. Three dollars and eighty-six cents to add to your, your bill just to be able to have your waste refuse picked up. And overall, it came out to thirty-five dollars a year per resident to be able to have your, 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 um, your, your refuse, your yard refuse picked up. Because right now, we have problems, big problems. I had, I had fourteen bags today, and they picked up ten and left four there. I had to go back and chase the guy down and give him ten bucks and say, hey, man, could you pick these other four up? He was happy to do it. But we're trying to figure this out, and we're looking at a minimal cost that this information came from the last meeting, that three dollars and eighty-six cents would allow us to pick up that refuge and not go through these headaches we've been having over the past year. So I would like to see some kind of plan coming forward if, if, if it's next year, but at least we got, we're starting to talk about it and come together and bring a plan.
Commissioner, we have the plan, we have the price. If that's something you all wanted to do, we're ready to put those revenues in from, we would come up with the revenues borrowing from another fund, putting an assessment program together for on the tax bills next year, which would reimburse that fund. We know how many people we need, we know the vehicles we need. We just need you all to discuss that at this hearing or the next hearing and say, yes, you want to do it.
So in the interest of time and and the commissioners and the mayor, what do you guys think? That's something that we can talk about now or later, but it seems to be a conversation that we need to have at some point.
Well, if you all listened to me back when we did it, we wouldn't be in this position.
Now, that, I agree, I agree with you.
And I'm just gonna say it. I've been waiting to say it many times. Four to one, four to one. I'm the lone one out there that said, don't do this. We had done it before so many times. We have privatized twice before. No one listened to me. Thank you. Just wanted to throw that in.
You know what, Commissioner Wilson, you got it right. You hit it on the head. I agree with you. So that four to one, join the club, because I've been four to one many times.
Now, we're gonna pay.
Well.
But it's up to the rest of the.
I brought this up back when we were in the budget process. Rob had been working on it, and that's what he's come up with, with that three dollars and eighty-six cents, or come up with a claw truck. So that's already been on the, on the deal to do, so we can finish that up at the next budget.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, we've looked at it. We know what the costs are. We know what the expenses are. We can figure out a way to pay for it. It would take us probably five to six months to get up and running. We would just fund it from a loan from another department, pay that department back once we get the revenues from those additional charges on tax bills next year, if that's what you want to do.
One of, one of the things that we did discuss during the presentation, the Director of Finance did her presentation, which is a great presentation. She mentioned some of the things that that we tabled, and we had, we need to bring back for discussion at this particular meeting. One of those things was allocating money for the, the reflective park. We have the African-American cemetery. We were talking about possessing that, and we had a whole conversation about that. Unfortunately, our city attorney was not here, so we wanted to get some clarification as to what can we do to possess that park, because we talked about the different, there was a, 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 we had a lot of conversation about it, but we wanted to know what would it take for us to possess that park and how much would it cost us to do so? So we can actually go in and do, there's plans to do a reflective park there, but we, obviously, we can't move forward until we have a consensus that we, we're either gonna possess the land, it's not gonna cost us anything, we can do what we want to do without someone coming back to say, hey, I own that, that property.
Yeah, we looked at this, probably been a couple of years now, and we anticipated that acquiring, taking possession of that property was.
Oh, you have the, your microphone, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So we had talked about this a couple of years ago and looked into the costs of acquiring that property, and we, I think it was north of fifty thousand dollars, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars, if I recall, in order to, to acquire that property. The, the issue from the commission's standpoint was, the idea was if we were going to do something significant, some big building or something there, then it probably made sense to acquire the property and, and we would have to figure out a way how to bear that cost. If, but if, if we were just going to stick with a gazebo or park benches or something small, then the commission decided that we would just kind of keep it as is, not acquire the property, and just, and just, you know, run the risk, I guess, that someone comes and claims ownership and tells us to remove the benches.
Have we done any due diligence at this point to get information out there that, you know, that we, we actually have been maintaining the property, but is there any possibility of someone coming? What is the possibility of someone coming to say, yeah, I own that property, based on what we've done in our due diligence?
Yeah, we haven't looked at it in a couple of years, but when we looked at it a couple of years ago, and we, we obtained an appraisal on the property, we felt the, the risk of an owner coming forward was, was minimal, but we had to go, we had to, we had to go through the court process to obtain title to it. And at the time, the estimation, we can go back and look at the minutes, but I, I thought it was north of fifty thousand dollars to, to acquire the property. But we haven't done anything since that time.
So again, we've maintained that property for over twenty-some years, and if we look at what we've already put into that, it, 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 it goes above and beyond fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, with that being said, I want to make a motion that we actually pursue this property and purchase this property so that we were allowed to go ahead and put a reflective park that would consist of some benches, some shrubbery, and a tree. So that's my motion.
How much?
Fifty thousand dollars.
And what, what property is this again?
That is the African-American cemetery that we've been maintaining for twenty-some years. And we have been, been sitting on it and, and there's plans to, just to kind of make it a reflective park. So that's, that's the property we're talking about. We've had, we've had ceremonies there, different things. There is a marker there, a hollow ground marker there right now that sits out on the curb. But again, we still, we still cut it, we still maintain it. We can keep kicking a can down the road and cutting it and maintaining it from now until the cows come home. But until we do something with it, we're gonna be right where we are, still kicking a can down the road, trying to figure out what to do with it. Because obviously, you can't build on it. We cannot build houses on it. We can't build anything on it.
It's not ours.
It has been designated as a cemetery.
All right, here's, here's the thing with that cemetery. It's, as we do the maintenance of mowing, we only mowing the front, and there's a tree there already, and there's a plaque there already. There's no parking there, and when you take and buy that property behind that right-of-way, then you got the liability, somebody goes out there and gets hurt. You could get sued. So it's, it's easier to go along like we're doing right now, not having to do that. We, we do maintain that little place up front. There is a nice tree there already, but we could put benches and a, and seats there.
The, the, the plan was to put the tree in the center of the property. There's a whole layout and a plan for this.
You got neighbors that live in that little neighborhood up there, and I think we need to talk to them about it also. Okay, all right, I don't, I'm not, okay, make the, you made the motion?
I made the motion, yes. So we can keep kicking a can down the road, or we can do something about it.
Yeah, we, we, we maintain it. That's enough.
All right, so we go another fifty years, another hundred thousand dollars. So now, if you want to be upset about some, Commissioner Wilson, be upset about that money we're about to spend for nothing.
How much money have we spent up there, Steve? Somebody find out. I don't think, it's not even twenty thousand dollars.
You've been cutting the grass, you've got manpower, you've got, you've got the amount of hours that it takes to do it, the equipment that we're using.
Well, I said.
So, yeah, there's, there's time and there's resources that goes into that every time we cut it.
Get a cost by the next meet.
Every, every time we cut it.
They don't, there's nothing.
There's a cost that goes to that.
It's dirt.
It's a cost that goes to it. You can't just let it grow up and, and the residents start complaining that it's overtaking their, 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 their properties.
Get what the cost is, if you can find it. All right, go ahead. Make the motion.
I made the motion. Sounds like. I made the motion, so I'm like.
I'll second it.
We got a second?
Who's second? Oh, yeah. All right, let's vote.
Well, I'm just gonna tell you there's no parking there, I don't wanna put money into a property, it's not ours, so I'm going, I'm going to vote no, cause it's not even our property for us to put money into and there is no parking.
Well, I think that's, that's the, that's the motion, right?
Everybody voted?
Everybody vote?
One more person needs to vote.
Do you do vote?
I don't know.
Did yours?
I've, I thought I voted.
Somebody didn't.
I voted.
Press your buttons again. There we go.
All right, everybody vote? All right, no, all right, moving on, go ahead.
All righty, moving right along. Okay. Page, on page forty-three, there is an item that says, uh, city staff charges and it's five hundred dollars. I just, I would just didn't, I didn't know what that was. Page forty-three.
Forty-three.
Yeah, forty, page forty-three, there's a line item that says, city staff charges, um, I'm just trying to figure out what that, what that is.
Two-thirds of the way down.
Two-thirds, way down.
It's right above fingerprinting, uh,
Two hundred and twelve.
Fingerprinting fees, it's right above that.
Is this in the police budget?
Uh, page, page forty-three or none, in the new book.
There must be fingerprint fees in.
It is, uh.
Is that, is that a revenue or is that an expense? Hold on, I'll tell you.
I find us, I, I'm just kidding, I find this very interesting, that we're discussing a five hundred dollar charge and a hundred and eleven dollar million budget.
Revenue by source.
Is that what it is?
Is that the fingerprinting revenue?
Yes, it's, it's small revenues like that and.
Yeah, yeah, I would just, it just says, uh, staff, it says city staff charges, so I, I just wanted some clarification as to what that means. I'm not talking about the amount, I'm talking about what it means, I just wanna know what it means.
Yeah, any services that we might provide to our city staff that are, they're not entitled to as an employee, we would charge them for, so just, you know.
Give me an example.
A fingerprinting fee.
Well, that's, that's, that's right below it, there's, there's a line item for that.
Public records requests?
Publics rec, yeah, public records request.
So if I ask you for a public record request, there is a fee involved in that?
If there's excessive copies.
If there's extensive research time, a staff member can let us know what their staff charge, what their time is gonna be and we will charge the requestor for that.
Okay, all right, that explains it, thank you. I did have a question about transfer ends, but we, we covered that. Covered that as well. Moving right along. I had a question on page forty-eight. It's on, it's page forty-eight, but it's listed as, uh, budgeted expenditures, expenditures by function. There's a function here that says, uh, general government services. In twenty-twenty, we had eleven point nine million dollars, twenty-twenty-one, we had fifteen point four million dollars, twenty-twenty-two, thirty-nine point seven million dollars and a proposed, proposal of sixteen point three million dollars here in this budget cycle. My question is, why does we have such a, there's a large fluctuation of those funds? Why does, why is it so fluctuating? When, uh, you know, again, I, I look at budgets and I'm hoping that, uh, the budget would be kinda tight, that usually when you see things like that and if you look at this in a, in a, in a form of a chart or a graph and you see it like that, there's, it's, it's questionable. I just wanna know why it is so, uh, volatile or why does it fluctuate so much?
The big reason that you'll see a difference between twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three is that the ARPA funds, when they were received and they were budgeted for expenditure, they were budgeted in general government services. So that accounts for a huge difference between twenty-twenty-two and the twenty-twenty-three budget.
So, so that would actually have been, would have been applied to the twenty-twenty-three, which lowers it down from last year at thirty-nine point seven, seven-four million?
Correct, so, you know, in twenty-twenty-one, you were at fifteen-four, twenty-twenty-three, we're back down to sixteen, um, one, so.
I, I said eleven, okay, I see, I'm sorry, I see it.
Yep.
Okay, all right, twenty-twenty-two was huge. Okay. Okay, um, there you go. Uh, on, on page fifty, no, page fifty-three, there's a line item for our, for postage and freight. It, last year, it was four hundred dollars and it dropped down to one hundred dollars, what, what was the change? What did this affect? What did, what did this postage affect?
Somebody's been mailing out cards.
I'm talking to the city manager.
I know. Somebody's been mailing out cards.
So the question is, why did it go down from four hundred to one hundred?
Yes.
I will look at the experience on that for you, I don't have that handy, because it's not one of the larger line items that I keep at my fingertips, but, um, my guess would be that the experience that we've had in the, uh, postage would have dictated that we reduce that line item.
Experience, okay, so it doesn't, as the mayor stated, we put out, um, these cards, I do it, Commissioner Wilson do it, the mayor does it, he sent out cards to new residents.
No, mine goes out in the, in water bill, sure.
I'm glad you said that, thank you. Um, so we send out these, these, uh, cards in the mail to our new residents and, uh, would it, would that affect that?
No, I don't either.
If it was charged to that line item, it would affect that.
So does, is it, is it being charged to that line item, that's my question.
Some of those expenditures have been charged to that line item and some are not.
Would I, would the cards that we send out to the residents, I'm being more specific now, would the cards that we send out to the residents be affected by that line item?
My, I'd, I'd interject here, my understanding that the, at this point forward in my discussion with city manager is that that will come out of, any postage that we incur will come out of our ten thousand dollar
Yeah, yeah.
Fund, that we, um, just so the residents know, we're all given ten thousand dollars for a discretionary fund, um, within our district. I can tell you what I've used it for, you like those flashing signs that tell you what speed? I've used a couple of those, they're about three to four thousand dollars each. Um, but from, at this point forward, I understand that that will start come out of our discre-, our, our postage will come out of our discretionary fund.
And I, I made a mistake, I don't send them out in a water bill, mine goes out with the water counter. When they give up, every new person that comes into the city and picks up a packet, it don't get mailed, it gets handed to them, so I don't mail any out. I forgot about that, it goes straight out of, when they hand them the package when they come here, I don't mail out anything through the city.
Well, I think that the service that, that, um, that I provide, um, that, uh, to my citizens and just welcome them to the city, that's another thing, uh, that is nice to have, uh, when you're new here, to get a letter from your commissioner or your mayor, the state, welcome to the city, I think that's a very minimal, minimal cost. So I'm gonna actually make a motion that we put it back and allow, uh, the, the commissioners to send out the, uh, the cards to their new residents. Uh, we're, we're talking about a difference of what, what? Eight hundred dollars, three hundred dollars?
What we're talking is a hundred dollars possibly for each one of us, which I'm sitting here realizing that I, we have a hundred and twelve million dollar budget and I'm talking about some postage, I mean, I think that can come out of my discretionary funds, which is a hundred dollars, which is no problem. I do the same as you do, I send to each new resident, I try to, so if you didn't get one, I'm sorry, but, um, as a disclaimer, but a hundred dollars, I don't think, I mean, I'm, I'm just an amazement here, I'm, you can take the hundred out of my discretionary fund.
Okay, well, good, well, well, can we just keep it the same and just, uh, just, just, just let Commissioner Wilson take her hundred dollars out of the, uh, her discretionary fund, if that's the case?
No, if you wanna change it, make a motion.
I've already made the motion.
Hmm?
I, I just, well, I, I'll restate the motion.
Who's second?
I'll just make the motion that we actually put it back to what it was, that will allow the commissioners to send out the post, send out, pay for the postage, that will send out the letters to the new residents.
Do I hear a second? All right, Dodge from a lack of seconds.
All right.
That is a good word.
I don't either. May I take a second, Mr. Oliver? I'm gonna throw in that I also use the remaining of my discretionary funds for items for our resource officers in the police department. So none of it was used for anything besides our residents.
All right, I have a que-, I have a question here on page one thirty-three.
That motion failed for non second.
Yep.
I have, I have a, a question on page one thirty-three, it, it is the Okoye Music Festival and it's not, I don't need to do motions or anything like that, so I'm, based on what we just talked about, I'm assuming that since this is a zero line item, that, uh, the music festival will not be asking the city for any funding, uh, for that event. Is that correct or am I incorrect?
No, we have to, can I, can I speak at this point? My understanding is that we have to give the city manager the, a line item to be able to actually be able to sign the, um, what do you call those invoices, Rob, correct? So there has to be a line item there so that you have something to draw on, cause you have to sign the invoices prior to any money coming in. Am I correct?
I don't know.
I, I, I'm not sure what your question is, Commissioner, maybe we could ask the finance director?
I wanna ask the finance director a question.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that's zero.
The, the Okoye Music Festival is not budgeted in that line, the Okoye Music Festival is budgeted under recreation. It's budgeted as a transfer out, because we transfer the, um, funding approved by the commission in the general fund, we transfer it out to a separate fund that we maintain for the specific purpose of accounting for all of the, um, donations and revenues generated by the Okoye Fund and all of the expenditures, so that they are not commingled with the budget of the city.
And just, just for a point of interest, how much, it averages about two hundred thousand a year in sponsorships to go back, to help pay for all the bills. All the sponsorships paid for all the bills. So in reality, if you don't wanna do it a hundred thousand dollars, that's fine, but it pays for itself, like some of the others don't. I'm telling you, not another, and people, they wanna keep bringing that music fest up, that's, that's fine with me, that we go out and raise the money and I can tell you right now, none of the judges function. Let me finish, let me finish, you grin all you want, let me finish.
No, I'm not grinning, I'm just agreeing with you.
All the money is raised back through sponsorships. How much sponsorships have you raised for the others? None. So, keep kicking it, but the citizens in this city like it and people around in the county like it, so if you don't wanna do it, vote against it. That's how it is, it is.
I'm sorry.
But the money goes back into that account every year for what we spend. If we spend ten thousand dollars on a stage, it goes back, we spend ten thousand dollars on the lights, it goes back. We don't give it out to somebody ahead of time either, it's wait till you turn a certified check in through the finance department and then they write the checks. But that's, that's fine, just keep kicking on that.
Well, Mayor, I'm not kicking on anything, I'm, I'm only, I'm only looking at a line item and, and again. So, it shows zero, my question is to you, um, uh, Director of Finance, can you tell me, um, where is it at on, on the parking, what is it listed as on the parking and wreck and how much is it budgeted for?
It's budgeted for one hundred fifteen thousand dollars and it is listed on page one thirty-nine. It's listed as a transfer out, it is a part of a one hundred eighteen thousand five hundred dollar transfer out. Again, the, the one fifteen is transferred out into, um, the Okoye Music Festivals, um, separate fund that we keep for separate bookkeeping.
So why can't we list, list it as that? Why it just be a transfer out, can we, why can't we just list it as that, you can say transfer out, but Okoye Music Festival, transfer out. So, so, so make it transparent.
I could do that, it was not done to be anything.
Do I need to make a motion to do that or can we just do it?
Transparent.
Is this, in, in, in terms of transparency, that's all? Can, can we do that, Scott, can we just change it?
I think it's a, it's a separate account, because we get, we have money coming in, we have money going out initially and then money coming in as a reimbursement, is that, if that, is that the reason why it's a separate account?
It's a separate account, because we cannot co-mingle any outside resources with the resources of the city, so I have to move it into that separate fund. In order to move it into the separate fund, I have to transfer it out and that's why I list it as a transfer out.
Okay, so let's get, let's be more descriptive then, so transfer out, Okoye Music Festival, can we do that?
I can create a separate line item for that.
Okay, thank you.
Why are we telling you what's through with, with this?
I didn't tell, I just asked, can we do it, I didn't tell anything.
I would assume this is accounting practices.
If it ain't their way, it ain't their up way.
All right, that's all taken care of. That's taken care of. All right, so, my last item, last but not least, based on what I've looked at in last year's budget and this year's budget and the questions that I've asked and the questions I've heard, uh, going back and forth and trying to get clarity on descriptions and different things of that nature, I, I'm, I'm led to, to, um, I'm led to make a motion. I'm led to make a motion looking at, um, being a good steward. We talk about being good stewards, we talk about, I've heard, everything is for the citizens and I've heard those things and I truly believe those things. And I, it's, it's leading me to go back to two thousand sixteen, when this commission actually approved a financial audit. And I have brought in, uh, at least two financial companies to talk about a comprehensive financial, uh, uh, a, a kiffer, a comprehensive financial report, the difference between that and a financial audit and there's, there's, make no mistake about it, there is a big difference. So, with that being said, uh, I, I feel that is important, um, you know, again, everybody feel that they have a duty to, to do this, to do that and, but I feel that it's important for me, as elected official that took an oath to the citizens of Okoye, based on all just these questions that I had here, and I, I had, I had a lot more, but it's okay. I, I had to condense that down in inches of time, but I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, um, not only look at the approved, uh, financial, uh, audit that we did in two thousand sixteen, that we funded. So the motion is that we, uh, fund the, uh, uh, up to a hundred thousand dollars, that we fund the financial audit that was approved in two thousand sixteen.
All right, do I hear a second? We good? All right, no second.
I have, I have a question, what, cause that was before my time, so I don't, I'm not sure what audit is referenced.
I'm referencing an audit. I'm referencing an audit that was approved by this commission in two thousand sixteen, at some point, they agreed that, uh, we should have, this, the city should have a financial audit. And that was agreed upon, so if you were here in two thousand sixteen, it was voted on unanimously, but it was never funded. So, again, my motion states that, um, that we recognize that approved audit by this commission and, uh, funded up to a hundred thousand dollars, uh, that we would know what our true financial strength is in this city.
Does, does not the, the audit that we just had and all the stuff comes up with that same answer?
We are subject to a financial statement audit every year, this commission, acting as a committee, just selected. We are subject to a financial statement audit every year. This commission, acting as a committee, just selected our new audit firm, Herbice Gray. They have conducted interim audit steps and found that we had nothing of, nothing to note. They will be back out here in, um, January to conduct their final test work. Um, they are, as you know, you selected them, highly regarded financial statement auditors in the government sector.
And what was the rate?
They, I believe that we're paying them, I can tell you exactly.
It's already in the budget.
It's already in the budget.
Yeah.
It's already in the budget. And, um, if you'd like, I'll look up what, what we're paying them for.
No, no.
So the question I just had.
We've done all of this time and time again. Make a motion and we'll vote on that one too.
I have a question. The question I have is, was that a, a, a kifer, an annual kifer that we do? Is that what they just did, right?
They review.
A comprehensive annual financial report that we report to the state.
The annual comprehensive financial report, yes.
So it goes back to what I was stating before. I brought in two financial companies, and there's a difference between a financial audit and a kifer. They're two different things.
Sir, would you?
And at some point, I believe that, I'm sorry, excuse me, at some point, I believe that this commission recognized that. So obviously, we've been doing kifers for how long?
We have been doing, um, annual comprehensive financial reports. I'm not, I'm no longer permitted to call them kaffers.
Kaffers.
Um, annual comprehensive financial reports. We have gotten the award for over thirty years for our excellence in preparing our annual comprehensive financial report. And we have been finding free for the term that I have been here with the city.
Yeah, there's two cities, uh, one up north and one in Mississippi that receive, uh, reports, uh, um, awards for their financial reports for years. And then come to find out, they became the, the, um, the butt of investigation that, that shook this country when it comes to municipal, uh, financial misuse. So those kifers is just one thing. That's the reason I brought Robert Half here to this commission to talk about a kifer and to talk about the difference between a kifer and an actual financial, a actual financial audit. So there is a difference. And, and again, if, if, if we're not, you know, I, 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 I know that this is not gonna pass, but it's okay though. But as far as my duty to the citizens that elected me, that's what I'm doing. That's why I made that motion. I'm doing that to make sure that I do what I was elected to do. So I made the motion. If it passed, it passed. If it doesn't, it doesn't. But the motion is already on the floor, and is there a second? If it is, it is, it's not, it's not.
It didn't get one, sir.
Well, I have.
Now, if he wants to do one.
He, he, oh, that, he is me.
Yeah.
Commissioner Brenson?
My question is, uh, is in two thousand sixteen, was this actually something that the commission approved? That's the question. And I need to know the answer before I vote either one way or the other, because I, if the commission approved it, then I, my, my next natural question for me would be, why hasn't it came?
We decided not to.
I, I, I think if I remember correctly, um, there was fifty thousand dollars put in for some type of, and I can't remember specifically if it was two thousand sixteen or so, but it was discussed during the budget, um, hearings. And it was put in the budget at fifty thousand dollars. But there was never any discussion for what type of audit, if it was gonna be a performance audit, a forensic audit, which departments would be audited or which functions. And, um, I think once or twice, there may have been discussions to try to narrow that down a little, but, uh, that, that was never successful, so I think that money just remained in there and it was never spent.
Right, and so, now, now, yeah, well, my second, if that's the case, what sparked the conversation to have that type of audit outside of?
Florida League, Florida League of Cities. Um, we had a commissioner who just came back from Florida League of Cities and said there were people that said, we could do this. And it was put in without really too much discussion as to which programs or which departments or which type of audit, uh, and I think, uh, the number was pulled out of the air that night for fifty thousand dollars.
It wasn't when we found out that it was gonna be.
It is. Can I ask the finance director a question?
Ca, much more costly than fifty thousand dollars. And that was, that was just the beginning, so we never acted upon it.
And so has the money been sent back to general fund? Is the money still sitting in a, in a audit account?
No, that would have, at the end of the year, that money disappeared. It just went back into that.
That one they just, we hired for a member back two months ago.
Right. And I, I'd, I'd say let's, because this is a tough one, because the commission voted unanimously to do it, and then for whatever reason, it wasn't done. That's, to me, I scratch my head on that, uh, as to, as to the why it wasn't completed. Uh, but we did just hire, uh, a pretty prominent accounting firm. Have they just done one iteration of, of accounting with us?
They are in the process of performing the first audit of our twenty, well, they will be auditing the two thousand twenty-two annual comprehensive financial report. They have done interim work. So their interim work involved, at this point, evaluating our internal controls primarily. And they've done some interim testing of payroll and other processes and things like this. And then when they come back out in January, they will select their samples, do their testing, have their fraud conversations with, um, certain members of management. And at that point, they will write their report and tell us if they have found anything that we need to be concerned about or that the commission needs to be concerned about. I should say they report to you, they don't report to me, they report on me. So we are in that process right now.
Can, can I ask you a question? When those, when we went through that process, we all looked at that, we all looked at their qualifications. They're well qualified, and there's some kind of thing that goes back to when other people put in one time, they're not quali, they weren't on the state list. Something to do with audit, I think, they weren't, those people weren't on the state list.
Uh, uh, the, when we did this, um, RFP for the audit services, we sent it out very broadly, so anyone who was qualified to perform a government, uh, audit of a government financial statements was eligible to submit a bid. We received three. And, um, we did not rely upon a list. The list that you're referring to, sir, was, um, for consultants.
Right.
Uh, we, we, anyone was allowed who qualified to, to bid on the contract. And we received three, and you were allowed, the committee evaluated all three.
I have a quick question for you as well. Does it surprise you that, um, counties like Osceola County, Orange County, Orlando, even Apopka, that actually they, they'll do a actual, a kifer for the state of Florida, but also do a second audit as well? A second financial audit in addition to a kifer? Would that surprise you?
You have me at a disadvantage because I am a previous fraud investigator, and I'm a certified internal auditor, and I have done audit. It doesn't surprise me that a lot of audits are done, and we could have a ton of conversations about that, about why people would per, pursue you and encourage you to have audits done. It doesn't surprise me, um, that agencies have multiple audits performed.
Okay, so these are also government entities that are doing a kifer just like we do a kifer, but also feel the need to do a financial, a annual financial report, and some do it every five years, from, from my research, from what I've found. So, yeah. That's, but again, that was my motion, and I have done my due diligence, and I have done what I have been elected to do, so the rest is up to this commission.
Just for public record, I know that myself, I do what I'm supposed to do for services. Putting on public record all along, I do what's right for services, I do what's right by the financial director and by what staff says and by what our auditors say. You consider and say that, we all do what we're supposed to do. There's nobody up there trying to undermine our financial fakeness. So let's make that clear on the budget, on, on the comments. Everybody up here, I know, and I'm pretty sure every commissioner up here.
Every commissioner up here does the same thing. We're all here to represent citizens, and I know with our audit, we just did that, hired those people to come do exactly what, what that is. And we have one of the better financial things, and I think you would say that too. From, I, I, I will make a quick statement that I've seen today. Claremont, who has got more business going on than anybody I ever seen, in the process of their budgeting, they're gonna raise their taxes thirty-something percent above what they are right now. And that city has got more business and more functions going on than anybody I've ever seen. So I think this city does a great job with our, our city manager and our staff, finance director, they've done a great job with the finances. So I have no problem with it, and I think those auditors, we all went through those auditors back a few months ago and came up with that, and I appreciate it. So, all right, who's, was there what, a second while ago? Now do you want a second? We want to go back? All right, didn't, didn't get a second, Commissioner.
That's all I have.
All right. Well, I guess it's my turn, but, hm, I don't, I don't, you know, I'm not, I, I, these pages that we sit here and go through tonight, we're, we're, we're supposed to either call in or go see the city manager and discuss what we want to do. And our job is to go through these pages and go to the city manager and go through these processes at, before we come to these meetings. And if you got a question about a shovel or a question about a truck, ask him. That's, that's what the process is for, city manager. So not to, not that we can, we can stay here all night tonight, but the process is, folks, when you get this budget book, go through it, then call them and ask them. Did, did you not do that? I know Commissioner Brenson did, and I know, so that's what it's for. But I, I, uh, I just think we need to be real careful about what we do with money, and the money needs, just like I said, what I go about mailing out stuff. I figured out with the city clerk to put my, my things to the new residents in that package when it goes out from the water department. Each one of us can do that, each one of us. So, but that's, that's mine. I, I don't have any amendments to change anything. Like I said, I, uh, I'm ready to move on down the line here, so I don't, I'm really not gonna amend anything or change anything, or I, I've already talked to the city manager about my, my process. So let's, um.
So let, let me just summarize the amendments we've done, the amendments that actually affect, um, the budget. We have an amendment, um, to increase the HRDB budget to a hundred thousand dollars. We have an amendment to, um, increase the youth council supervisor by five thousand dollars. We had an amendment to decrease the travel budget for the youth council by five thousand dollars. And we had an increase to the sidewalk repair fund by fifty thousand dollars. And that, those amendments are in addition to the revisions proposed, um, uh, in the budget workshop as outlined by the finance director in the presentation.
I also believe that we said that no, uh, only local travel. Wasn't that part of that motion?
Under the, under the, the, under the, um.
Under the, um, the, um, youth council.
Youth council, right.
I believe that was part of the local.
I don't, I don't think that was part of the motion.
That was motion a while ago. We voted on it.
But we didn't, we didn't, we didn't specify it for just local travel.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, you did.
It was just travel.
Read it back out, city clerk.
I did.
Read it back out, city clerk. Okay.
I'm right here.
I know. So the motion by Commissioner Wilson, seconded by Commissioner Fersner, was to reduce the youth initiative funding for travel to five thousand and only allow local travel.
So, and it passed, right?
It passed.
Yeah, okay.
Motion had carried three to two with, um, sorry. Yes, three to two with Commissioner Brenson and Oliver opposing.
Right, okay.
So, uh, this may be recorded, this may be recorded, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I hope it's being recorded. Go ahead. We're, announcement by finance director.
With the amendments, um, proposed by the commission, we would increase the proposed millage rate by point zero two three two to a total of four point nine seven three two mills, which would be a seven point two percent increase over the rollback rate.
All right, can I ask city manager, can you work on fixing, where that up?
Yes. Yeah, I, I know what you're asking, ma'am. We will, um, we'll look at that, we'll refine, um, the numbers, I think.
For the next meeting.
Yeah, for the next meeting. Um, the one thing you all do need to discuss, um, which was brought up this evening, is if you want to do the clotch up program, um, we'll make sure we have the original presentation, if you'd like. We have all the costs, uh, just so you know, if we do start that October first, it's gonna be several months before we can get that underway. And it would involve borrowing from another fund until next year, when the assessments come in.
I'm done.
And, and that, because it's under five point oh five, is just a regular vote, no super majority?
Correct.
All right. And I'll call it on the public to come.
Uh, I'm gonna be very quick, let's say, I'm here, everybody.
No, you got, you got, it's gotta be recorded. It's gotta be recorded. Be there for a second.
I had, um, one quick question in regards to the music festival you had made mention. You, you, one quick question about the music festival. You had made mention that we, um, use the transfer outline for a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars because we can't utilize city funds for a specific event like that, so we move it to an, an account outside of the city fund budget?
No, what, we can use the city funds as, is, um, voted on by the commission. What we cannot do is any of those donations that are received or revenues generated by the, by the music festival cannot be brought back in to the city. We cannot co-mingle it with city revenues. So we move it into a separate fund to keep those funds from being co-mingled with the city.
Right, you're right. So where can we see those revenues? Like, as a taxpayer, I can only see the city budget. So I know we say that we raised three hundred and forty thousand dollars or seven hundred and eighty-six million dollars, but as, as transparency goes from a standpoint of a city resident, I'd like to be able to find somewhere in the budget where I show line items of income from a festival. And, and this, in this, go ahead.
As the finance director for the city, my responsibility is for city funds. Those aren't city funds. While we do track them and help to, to manage them for the committee that oversees the, um, music festival, I am not responsible for managing those funds, tracking those funds, or reporting upon those funds.
So I, so I have no way as a citizen to actually find that information through the city, through the city itself, from a revenue standpoint?
I do not produce, produce a budget or a financial report for that.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I don't mean to be difficult on you, ma'am, I know you, uh, okay.
You can get it, you can ask for it through the.
Oh, I've asked for it for years, like, for like ten years.
You can get everybody money, we get, done with it.
Okay.
You can get a call.
So I do value you very much, ma'am. I know you're in a very tough spot, uh, when it comes to some of these things that are like, like that. I do value what you're doing, okay? Mayor, this, this will boil back to exactly, and when I say I've asked about this for about ten years, Mark, you know this, um, very well, I've spoken to you about it. Um, ob, obviously, it's run through the Parks and Rec Department, and I, they do an outstanding job, by the way. Our whole department does an outstanding job. But it's also why I brought up establishing a fund. This kind of ties back to the H, um, uh, the Human Re, Reverse Diversity Board, uh, issues as well. And in the paperwork that I submitted to you guys, it has a little bit of an explanation, and it's obviously on the record, so if anyone's listening, they can go on record, I believe, and you publish it and see it. We should be establishing a fund for events specifically. That fund can be a million dollars for all I care. And we should see through the city's budget, the income and the expenses that are used. If we want to give the Human Rights Diversity Board a quarter million dollars to do an event, so be it, that's fine. That goes through the, the chains of command, and we make the decision on how we want to use that money for events. But as a taxpayer, when we're spending nearly a half a million dollars, because the hundred and sixteen, out of all due respect, the hundred and sixteen thousand that's shown as a transfer out from the Parks and Recs Department isn't actually what we spend on the festival. Mayor, you even said, we spend three or four hundred thousand dollars on entertainment alone.
Let, let me make a statement to what you're making, because you don't understand. We don't pay it out, we get it back.
I don't know where, but, but you say that, but I don't know where.
Let me finish.
Okay.
You know, you do this every year and everybody, you know, the money's there, you can get a copy of anything that's paid back.
She just said, I cannot.
Let me finish. You can get a copy of what's paid out and what's paid back. Nothing is paid out until the money comes in from sponsorships. Now, somebody's got a copy of everything we turn in. Sherry Seaver gets every check, goes through finance, and gets turned in through finance. Sherry Seaver gets every check, goes through finance, gets turned in through finance. Every bit of the money goes through that place. Nobody touches the money.
I, I'm not, I'm not.
I know, but you keep worrying about.
No, 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 you're Mr. Mayor.
Let me finish, you keep worrying about it, every year you bring it up. Now, if you want to take a, why don't you, I know you do Facebook, take a poll about who likes it and who don't like it. But the money goes through there. I don't want to touch the money on any projects we do. That money comes through that thing if, if it's, it might, then last year was less than three hundred thousand dollars. All right, that was raised in the funds, the sponsorships to pay that. It's never, we, we ended up being, I think fifteen or twenty five thousand to the good after we done everything. So that's what it is, is, but you show me in the other places where we spending the money out on the other ones, where the funds are going.
Yeah, but you're, you're totally mis, you're totally misinterpreting, you're misinterpreting where I'm coming from. No, I should be able to finish.
I give you three minutes, so.
Hold on a second. I mean, this is, this is a valid conversation and we're having it respectfully. I'm, I'm not being disrespectful.
I didn't, I didn't say you were.
Okay.
I'm just saying, we gotta get the time down.
I understand that and I don't want to keep anybody here any longer. But she did state clearly that we have no way through the city or as a taxpayer for me to see those revenues. So when you say I can see them, that's not true. I'll move on.
It is, it is true.
Where can I find how much revenue we receive?
Can you give him a record of how much sponsorships we get? Yes.
We, we do, let me be clear. Let me be clear, we have a record. But as the director of finance for the city of Ocoee, I do not produce a financial report. I do not produce financial records. I keep account of everything that goes on. But you're not going to find it in the budget book, you're not going to find it in the annual financial report because that is separate from the city while we track it.
So Mr. Brenson, that would go, that would go into where the audit that Mr. Oliver's talking about would come into play, you know? I, I just, I just see like, and it's funny because you say that I don't want them or take a poll. And I like, I like that you say that because I actually really enjoy the concerts. I want more events. I'd like to make us a destination for events. But we have to establish a budget through the city that shows an income and an expense. That way we can continue to build on that. We can't have gray areas where we operate one concert one way. And then we ask the H, the HRDC to operate it a different way. We need to, as a city, have one established event, if we have to have somebody in place to, to cover that, one established event fund for income and expense and expenses.
You're, you're finished.
Okay.
Enough time, but I will tell you once again, and we're done with this, you can go down and get financial, they got to be able to find it. Everything that's turned into sponsorships in the money, we don't owe anybody anything. But I'm telling you, your money's counted for through the thing, you can't do it without that way. And it's the same thing we're doing with, and during the matter too, about turning the money into giving the money away. Wait a minute.
Yeah.
We, we, we give away seventeen thousand dollars a couple of weeks ago without any receipts, without any receipts. We give seventeen thousand dollars out to, to the person.
Well, I some.
Let me finish.
Okay.
If you've done yours now, I'm doing, so we can go sit down.
What's the conversation back and forth, but yeah.
Every year we go through this session about finding that. If the audits can find anything that's wrong with that, let them find it.
I never said there's anything wrong with it, sir. I said there's a better way we could do it and we could be more productive as a city.
The time limit's up, okay?
Okay, can I move to another subject then? May I move to another subject? Okay, can't say anything else.
Time limit's up. Your freedom is up.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. Anybody else, Mr. Moore? Put that, make sure that clock's on.
Mr. Mayor, hopefully I won't be long. I want to make three quick points. I was counting homeless my whole life, so I just have to make certain comments. First of all, from what I've seen, your director of finance or finance director does an excellent job. In regard to audits, and I did many audits, many different types of audits for many years, and I did many accounting. To throw out any dollar figure in regard to an audit without this knowing the type of audit and the scope of that audit makes no sense at all. And I want to clarify one more thing. This is a budget process. That means you're planning to spend money. You haven't spent a penny of the taxpayers' money for next fiscal year. You're simply planning to spend. I just had to make those couple of points. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right. Well, we moved beyond that, we went to the board of directors.
Are we getting to number two, right?
Again.
Still on public.
Tanya Doriska from the HRDB. Thank you for having me this evening, even though I didn't get through with my speech with the three minute limitation, but that's okay. Just wanted to make, to make a couple of statements and a request. Integrity is very important to me. I came here tonight and did exactly as I was asked. If there was some misunderstanding about the cultural events and what was to be requested from the city commissioners and the mayor, I will look into that. I will ask that the city clerk provide me with this exact statement of what we decided to bring to the city commission at the HRDB meeting. Clarification and complete understanding is very important. So Melanie, will you be able to provide that for me? Okay, thank you, and I will come back and let you know.
All right. We would, one more.
Yep, just me. As a resident of the city and attending my first, I've lived in the city just a year. And mind blown on lots of things, but I do want to address Commissioner Wilson, I believe. Where we are talking about sidewalks, there will always be sidewalks to fix. There will always be streets to be fixed. But our children, they, they need to travel. There are experiences that our children will have that will affect them for a lifetime. And yes, fundraising is a beautiful thing. But as a woman that is fifty four years old, the parents of our children now are not the same as the parents we had before. So we need us as a city, the village, to help them. And to minimize their travel within this, to stay local, that doesn't cost anything. So we do need the money to give them the opportunity to travel, to have different experiences that they will never have within the city of Ocoee. I don't know what the whole thing is with the Founder's Day and the city music festival. I'm going to have to do some research. But if I want to know where the money goes or where, where the funding comes back or the money comes back, it should be one clear place that I should be directed to say, if you want to know, this is what went out. I can see that. This is what came in. As a taxpayer, I should be able to go to some office and say, I would like a copy of the revenue generated from said festival. And where did it go? If it's going back into the line item account that says transfer out, I, as a taxpayer, should be able to obtain that information. And just from the conversation back and forth, I am still clueless as to where I would get that information from. Mayor Johnson, you said it's available, we should be able to get it.
You can go to the city clerk and ask for public records and ask for copies.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, now. Do enough on the city commission work, we're gonna do comments again.
May I, could you fill out one of the forms? I have to fill out, please.
All right.
We need to do that. No, let's, let's read the, let's read the ordinance and then you can vote on the millage. This is an ordinance of the city of Ocoee, Florida, establishing a tentative millage rate of four point nine seven three two mils for ad valorem taxes for the city of Ocoee for fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty two, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty three, providing for millage adjustment, providing for collection of taxes, providing for seven point two percent in millage rate increase over the rollback rate, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We're gonna do a. With, I wanted to ask, Rob, can we put with the expectation of him working on that? Yeah. Make sure he stays at four nine five?
Yeah, that's where we are now, Mayor. We'll see what we can do to get us back down to close to where we were before.
We need to make it four nine seven tonight or?
Four.
What did he read? I'm asking the city manager.
I think, what's the rules for tonight? They can't go above or?
We cannot go above five point oh five. Because that's where we've sent, set the tentative millage rate.
Okay, but we'll, we'll work, you and I will work and get it lower if we can. We'll bring that back to the next meeting as long as there's nothing else added.
Right now it's at four point nine seven three?
Four point nine seven three two.
Three two. So we're gonna try to put it back down to four nine five?
We are going to shave here and shave there.
We need to shave. Do you need a motion or not?
No.
Okay, all right. What's next?
So you're gonna do a, you're gonna adopt the tentative millage rate, we just need a motion for that.
Motion to adopt tentative millage rate.
That would be a motion to adopt a tentative millage rate of four point nine seven three two mils for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty two, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
I'll make the motion. Motion made by Commissioner Brenson, do I hear a second?
A second?
Second by Commissioner Fersner. Any more comments? Let's move.
Are we voting?
All right.
You're right to the Scotty.
I'll go do that.
I voted no, I'll tell you why I voted no, because I do not want to go over the.
I will, I will not, I won't vote to go over the millage rate that we have at a balanced budget. So I voted no, but it reminds me of, I know.
When I can tell you, at the next public, next public meeting, I'll be doing the same. All right, Mayor.
So let me read the ordinance relating to the tentative budget. An ordinance of the city of Ocoee, Orange County, Florida, adopting a tentative budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty two, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty three, providing severability, providing an effective date. And then we need a motion by the city commission to adopt the tentative budget as distributed along with revisions resulting from the budget workshop and as amended at this tentative budget hearing for the fiscal year October one, twenty twenty two, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
All right, your lawyer, we need a motion.
I make the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Oliver, do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Seconded by Commissioner Brenson. No more comments, let's move.
It brings back memories, I'm sorry, it's.
All right. All right, before we conclude, I would like to announce the public hearing to consider the final millage rate and final budget that's scheduled for Wednesday, September the twenty first, two thousand twenty one, I mean, two thousand twenty two, at six P M, to be held here in our city hall commission chambers. The hearing has been advertised in accordance with the provisions of section two hundred dash zero six five Florida statutes and section C through seven of Article six of the Ocoee city charter. The appropriate ordinances necessary to adopt the final millage rate and final budget will be prepared by city staff and all other action necessary to comply with the requirements of section two hundred dash oh six five Florida statutes will be undertaken.